So, good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, December 14th, 2020. The time is 1:00 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a UDOT designation and disposition of city-owned property in the Bronx, Community District 4. Our presenter is Fernando Ortiz. He's giving his first presentation at the City Planning Commission.
And before Fernando begins, I want to note that I am pleased that we're starting today's review session with this particular project because it is the first city-owned parcel to come before the commission since the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan and rezoning were approved almost three years ago in March 2018. The proposal that you're about to see fulfills an important commitment that we made to Community Board 4, to Councilmember Vanessa Gibson, and to the neighborhood's residents as part of the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan. Since the plan was approved, the city has delivered on its many commitments at an exciting pace. HPD has issued requests for proposals for four city-owned properties, including the one that's before us today. Over 1,000 new affordable homes are under construction. SBS, which has hired a Jerome Avenue program manager, and she continues to coordinate business services and workforce support. The State Department of Environmental Conservation has taken important steps to help bring auto repair businesses into environmental compliance. Corporal Fisher Park, which is a new neighborhood park, has completed its public design phase. And just over a month ago, the Jerome Avenue Public Health Task Force released its Neighborhood Health Plan, which provides a blueprint to reduce health inequities in Community Districts 4 and 5. There is a lot more to share. So when this project comes back to the commission for pre-hearing review, the Bronx Office will proudly provide an update on all of the exciting progress. And with that, over to you, Fernando.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that introduction. Hello, everyone. My name is Fernando Ortiz. I work for the Bronx Office, and I am here today to present on 97 West 169 Street, known formally as the Corporal Fisher Site. Next slide, please. The applicant for this project is the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, known as HPD. The location is 97 West 169 Street, comprising two lots, Lot 27 and 32. It is within the Hybridge Neighborhood in Community District 4. And the actions requested are a designation of an urban development action area, approval of project as an urban development action area project, and disposition of city-owned property. Next slide, please. The project site is located within the Hybridge community, within the Community District 4, which is two blocks west of the Jerome Avenue rezoning of 2018. Next slide, please. The site shown here in red is adjacent to Corporal Irwin Fisher Park, which is just north of the site, both of which were formerly marked, mapped as parkland. The site sat vacant and unimproved for decades. It is within a five-to-10-minute walk to the subway line, the 4 and the D-line, both at 170th Street. It is serviced by the BX-35 along Edward L. Grant Highway, and it is serviced by the BX-11 and BX-13, two blocks west of the site at Plington Avenue. It is also south of the Cross Bronx Expressway and east of the Major D and Expressway, both major highways providing access to the George Washington Bridge and beyond. And it is serviced just a few blocks south by the Hybridge Library. Next slide, please. The Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan, we wanted to provide a little context on the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Study, which many of you should remember. The Bronx Office presented the project to the commission in August of 2017. And after a positive public review process, the associated zoning actions were adopted in March of 2018. Since that time, many of the commitments made during the planning process have been moving forward. But this project is the first of a few city-owned properties to come back in front of the commission. During the planning process, two commitments were made. One was to create a new park, and the other to create senior housing on unimproved and fenced-off city-owned property. And actions were approved as part of the rezoning to facilitate both. Since then, $4.6 million were committed to the new park on the northern parcel, known as Corporal Fisher Park, which has now completed design phase with New York City Parks. And on the southern parcel in 2018, HPD released an RFP for a senior housing development on the site and has since selected the proposal we are here to discuss today. Next slide, please. Currently, the site is within an R-71 zoning district, which is located on a narrow street and allows for an FAR of 3.44. Most of the area is residential with some community facilities nearby and commercial uses concentrated along the Jerome Avenue and Edward L. Grant corridors. Next slide, please. The site is made up of two tax lots that are currently vacant with approximately 15,000 square feet of total lot area. An intervening lot developed with a six-story residential building created two discontinuous parcels. Additionally, a map street ran through the northern parcel. Through the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan, we were able to demap the street on the northern parcel and map it as parkland to facilitate the expansion and development of a new neighborhood park, known as Corporal Irwin Fisher Park. The southern parcel then went through a state alienation process to facilitate the development of senior housing. The site has about 150 feet of frontage on West 169 Street and extends for a depth of approximately 130 feet at the eastern end and about 100 feet at the western end of the site. The project area is owned by the City of New York and is located on the northern side of West 169 Street, a narrow street between Nelson Avenue and Shakespeare Avenue to the east. Next slide, please. The proposed development site is a nine-story senior housing building and will contain 104 affordable dwelling units for low-income seniors, of which 30% is for formerly homeless seniors. All units will be 100% affordable. And on the ground level, there will be a community facility space to be occupied by a federally qualified health center. Next slide, please. The images shown here show the site both in the winter and in the spring. On the left, we can see the site if you're looking north towards the site directly opposite on 169 Street. In the middle, the top and bottom, we can see the site if you're looking east from the site to 169 Street towards Shakespeare Avenue. And on the right, we can see the site if you're looking west towards the site from 169 Street and Shakespeare Avenue. As you can see, the current situation of the lot, it is fenced off. Next slide, please. The developer for the site is the West Side Federation, which is a nonprofit developer specialized in senior housing and supportive service providing, and is the developer for the site. The development will be approximately 73,000 square footage of total area with an FAR of about 4.86. Again, this project fulfills commitments from the Jerome Avenue Neighborhood Plan established in 2018 for this area. Sustainability features include green walls, solar panels, energy-efficient windows and lighting, and gray water collection on-site as well as outdoor recreational space. Next slide, please. The nine-story affordable housing will be about 95 feet in total height with a setback of 10 feet at ground level and a ground-level floor-to-ceiling height of 15 feet. And every other floor after the ground floor will be 9.5 feet. The project is quality housing and has an air's envelope, which will allow it to have an FAR of 4.86. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposal is for a nine-story affordable senior housing with a community facility space on the ground level that will host a healthcare center. And the actions requested are a UDOT designation, UDOT approval and disposition of city-owned property to facilitate development with affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. I'll now turn it over to questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Fernando, welcome. I'm just wondering, do we have the unit breakdown? How many are studios versus one bedrooms? Since this is a senior project, I'm assuming that there might not be many bedrooms, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yes, I forget the exact numbers. There will be one two-bedroom apartment, I believe, one or two. And I think there will be mostly studios and about, I want to say about 40 will be one-bedroom.
Okay. And, I mean, obviously, there was community conversation in general about this city-owned site during the rezoning. Do you know what other interaction there's been since HPD issued the RFP with the community about the project?
Around this specific project, I am not 100% sure, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. I was just curious to see, because sometimes that's where some of the feedback might come about the number of one-bedrooms versus studio apartments. Thank you.
Mike Chernuckles.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I know this is the West Side Federation, and this is a part of their expertise. But I'm just wondering what kinds of onsite social services would be provided since at least 30% of the occupants would be formerly homeless.
Yeah, I believe what they've stated is they just said that the ground floor will have a designated healthcare center. I think that they will then engage in a different, on another process to find out what kind of specific services and healthcare center they will be providing. But I can find out more information on that and get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, this would be more along the lines of support services, workforce, employment opportunities, et cetera, which is generally the kind of support services that we see with other kinds of housing, with transitional housing units in it.
And certainly, that's what we saw with the Wishfish project on the Upper West Side.
Right.
A year or two ago. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Fernando. Could you say a little bit more about the materials for the building? It just looks sort of gray in the rendering. I wonder what it's actually made of? And also, if there are any apartment floor plans?
Yes, there are apartment floor plans that I have seen. As I mentioned, most of the apartments will be studios and one-bedrooms. And in terms of the materials, I am not too sure. I can get back to you on what materials the architect or the design team is planning to use for the site.
Okay, thank you.
And if you could share the floor plans, the apartment floor plans that we have, that would be helpful.
Perfect.
Commissioner Marine.
So, thank you, Fernando, and welcome to the team. I wanted to comment, and I know that design usually is not in our purview. Michelle asked questions, excuse me, Commissioner Deloos asked questions in respect to rooms sizes, which I was going to talk about. Commissioner Bernie talked about floor plans. If we can get some elevation of the entire building, that would also help. Also, the street exposure, how, what the street feeling is like. But one thing that I did want to comment on in terms of design is, can there be some consideration, given a little bit more consideration to the existing neighborhood? Because I see these buildings with these spots of colors throughout the borough, and they scream of affordable and supportive housing. And everyone has come to know them as affordable and affordable housing. So I just want to make that comment so that some consideration could be made. We don't want to necessarily call people out and let them know that they're in affordable or supportive housing buildings. And I think that consideration should be made to the part C of the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. And what I will do is, even apart from this particular application, pass that along to HPD.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. Because I will say that, and just a segue for a second, like, fixed completed this beautiful building, and they do great work on the Westchester and the Bronx for Parkway. And it just screams, it has the same type patches of color. It just screams of affordable housing. And I don't think we need to really make mention of whether it's affordable or supportive in the design work.
Any other commissioners wishing to comment? Okay, then this application is certified.
Okay. The second item on our agenda is a certification of a UDOT designation, dispositions of city-owned property, and an amendment to the Mott Haven Urban Renewal Plan in the Bronx Community Districts 1 and 3. Our presenter is Githanjala Minarajas, also giving her first presentation to the Planning Commission. Keith? There we go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hope you can hear me right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Githanjali, presenting the Melrose Open Door Projects in Community Districts 1 and 3. These are two separate applications pursued by New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. Next slide, please. Through the Open Door Program, HPD is proposing to develop vacant city-owned sites into homeownership affordable units in the Bronx. Manny is the developer for all the projects. These are two applications seeking four actions, such as UDA, Urban Development Action Area, UDOT, Urban Development Action Area Project Approval, Disposition of City-Own Land, and Urban Renewal Plan and Amendments. There are a total of nine proposed development sites across Community Districts 1 and 3. Under the HPD's Open Door Program, approximately 60 affordable homeownership units are provided. Each is as of right, with exception to the Urban Renewal Amendment, which we'll discuss further. The goal of these projects is to promote neighborhood revitalization across the city through infill developments that would expand the opportunities for affordable homeownership for New Yorkers. Next slide, please. Here is a map outlining all the projects. As mentioned, two projects comprising of nine development sites are located in Melrose and Morisonia neighborhoods, four development sites in CD1, and five development sites in CD3. The development sites are located in close proximity to the hub, the retail theater, restaurant heart of South Bronx, and Hunts Point. One-story commercial uses are concentrated along Westchester Avenue, the major corridor toward the project area. This is a general overview, and we'll discuss each project on its own. Next slide, please. Melrose Open Door Project in CD1. The project area consists of four vacant city-owned sites in Melrose neighborhood. The proposed development consists of four new four- and five-story residential developments with a total of 28 affordable units with affordable homeownership opportunities. These projects will be developed under Quality Housing Regulations. HPD proposes an amendment to the Mott Haven North Urban Renewal Plan. The amendment will facilitate the development of 12 affordable units in two buildings to facilitate the proposed development on sites 1 and 2. The application proposes amendment to the URA to exempt restrictions such as parking regulations, floor area ratio, and open space ratio. And in general, much of the project area is made up of floor density 1 and 2 family-attached row homes, and the proposed development complies with the current zoning development. Zoning districts are predominantly R6, R71, R72, R7B, and surrounded by a variety of zoning districts, including C62, M11, and R8A. Next slide, please. These are some of the context images of four development sites. From the left, development sites 1, 2, 3 are in the project area 1, located between St. Dan's Avenue to the west, Claudeville Avenue to east, Westchester Avenue to south, and East 156th Street to the north. Development site 4 is located on Tintin Avenue between East 161st Street and East 163rd Street. Next slide, please. Melrose Open Door Project CD3. The project area consists of five vacant city-owned sites located within both Melrose and Morisonia neighborhoods in the Bronx. The proposed development consists of three eight-unit buildings and four two-unit buildings with a total of 32 affordable homeownership units. Much of the project area is made up of floor density 1 and 2 family-attached row homes. The zoning district is predominantly R6, R71, R72, surrounded by a variety of zoning districts, including C62, M11, and R8A. Next slide, please. Here are some of the context images of the five development sites. Project area 1, which is sites 1 and 2, located between Eagle Avenue to the east, Washington Avenue to the west, East 163rd Street to the north, and Third Avenue East 161st Street to the south. And project area 2, which are sites 3, 4, and 5, located between Southern Boulevard to the west, Home Street to the south, Longfellow Avenue to the east, and Jennings Street to the north. Next slide, please. Summarizing on the project. Under the HPD's Open Door Project, a total of 60 affordable homeownership units are proposed and comprising of a mix of studios, 1, 2, 3, and possibly four-bedroom units. With the public sites, the Open Door Project will serve lower project affordability range, 82-110 percentage AMI, applicable to both the projects. And this project will have co-ops as proposed by the applicant. The proposed land use actions, including UDOT designation, UDOT designation, UDOT approval, disposition of city-owned land, Urban Renewal Plan and Amendments in CD1, Development Sites 1 and 2. These actions are required to facilitate development of affordable homeownership opportunities across the Melrose neighborhood. Independently, we have all the projects, the project development sites illustrations in the appendix. If required, we could pull that up. Thank you, and that's the end of the presentation. Happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Keith. So I open it up for questions from the commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Thank you, Githanjali. I'm wondering if you have, for the 32 units, what the unit mix is? Did I miss that?
We do not have the exact mix, but in the 32 units in development site, they specifically say it's four one-bedroom units. And in rest, all the four sites, it still say a mix of studio, one-bedroom, three, and maybe four-bedroom units.
Okay. And remind me what the AMI level is in Melrose currently?
Yeah, it is 80-110 percentage AMI.
It's the program, but what is the local community AMI? And I guess one thing, when it comes back, it'd be helpful to hear how Manny and HPD are hoping to ensure, to maximize the number of local residents who are going to benefit from the project. I'm sure there's pent-up demand for homeownership. I'm just wondering if there's a match between the AMI levels of this particular program, which I know are appropriate for first-time homebuyers. But just want to make sure that there's some thought given to the kind of outreach and perhaps first-time homebuyer education that might be necessary for the project.
Sure. You can look back with HPD applicant and get the information on that.
Commissioner Bernie.
Just a comment, actually. Just looking through the building designs that were in the appendix, I was happy to see that, for the most part, they seem to be modest contextual brick buildings, free of the colors that so rightly concerns Commissioner Marine. And so, good for HPD, and I hope it plays out that way and keep it up.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, this application is certified.
Hold on, I think I had a hand up. Or maybe my button's not working.
Okay, Commissioner Lemon, please.
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to follow along on the request for follow-up information that Commissioner Deloos had. And also to understand how, when this can happen, when it comes back for the public hearing, to understand how Manny proposes to manage these buildings. They're all, along with educating the homeowners about becoming homeowners, there's the ongoing challenge of taking good care of these buildings over the long haul and being sure that the residents remain committed to maintaining them as affordable units according to the terms that HPD has laid out. And that's really hard to do when it gets splintered into all these little bits and pieces. But Manny knows what they're doing on this stuff. But I'd be grateful if they'd fill us in a little bit more when they come back. And then also, I wonder if, could we get a little more information about the nature of the amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan? I didn't see any text of an amendment in our materials. And the briefing sheet just indicates that the current zoning requirements are prohibitively restrictive in terms of bulk. And I'm wondering what those restrictions are and how big a change is being requested here.
Keith, do you want to start by dimensioning it at a high order? And obviously, we can come, we will come back at the pre-hearing review session with more detail.
Sure. Just giving a brief, the C94470 URA and the amendment mentioned about the restrictions, example, parking regulation, the floor area ratio, and open space ratio.
Yeah, so obviously, the one that captures my attention is the floor area ratio. And so, how big a diversion are we making from the Urban Renewal Plan? This can come back at the public hearing.
Yes, definitely, we'll add information during the public hearing.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will check again to see if I have. Commissioner Marine.
I wanted to make comments on the open door term sheet and the longevity of the affordability. So having worked with the open door term sheet, its conditions are to provide longevity of affordability by not allowing the sale of the unit to go further than, of the home to go further than the 2% increase per year allowed by what market dictates on the building. And so, you know, I'm a little bit comfortable with the fact that the open door term sheet assures that. What I'm not comfortable with, and I will make it quite clear, is that the open door term sheet has presented some challenges in that the subsidy levels are really challenging for homeownership. I also wanted to talk to the fact of homeownership. If these are intended to be, be simple homes with one owner and for other unit owners, excuse me, other unit renters, or is this intended to be, I'm sorry, I can't see the material, a cooperative, which would totally set a different tone in that when cooperatives are built, the proximity of the cooperatives have to be at least less than five points, half a mile away from each other to consider them one cooperative. There have been challenges in that, you know, a four-unit building, then plus a president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, no room for a break-even point in terms of a vote. So I want Manny to please elaborate on how they intend on doing that in terms of the ownership of the units when we get back.
Gladly. Lots of questions on this for terms. Okay, no other hands. This application is then certified.
Hi, thank you. The third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments in the Bronx Community District 9. Our presenter is Manny Legueres.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is the Castle Hill, 909 Castle Hill Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. It's a private application by 510 East Realty Incorporated. They are seeking a zoning map amendment from R32 to R6B, C13, and R6B. They're also seeking a zoning tax amendment to appendix after the zoning resolution, designating the rezoning area as an MIH area. I also want to add- I also want to add upfront that another purpose of the rezoning is to bring into conformance some buildings within the project area that are certain, that are definite, that are currently non-conforming. Also, it would bring into compliance the FARs of the buildings, five buildings within the rezoning area. There have been no recent land use changes in this area. The zoning has intact since nineteen sixty-one. Next slide, please. Okay, the project area outlined in blue is bounded on the north by Quimby Avenue, on the east by Castle Hill Avenue, Story Avenue on the south, and Olmstead Avenue forms the western boundary. There are six lots within the project area, and I'll begin with, by the way, the development site is outlined in red, I'll begin with the development site. The building there is a two-story residential building built in eighteen ninety-nine, and the lot here, the building is built to point one-seven FAR, but the lot is approximately nineteen thousand square feet. Now, adjacent and to the north is a row of five, it's a row of five three-story buildings with ground floor commercial. The surrounding area, as you can see from the aerial, it's basically one to three fam, one to three-story, one and two-family homes. These are semi-detached and attached. The project area is just two blocks south of the Brugner Expressway, Mass Transit is good in this area, the number, number five and number twenty-two bus lines travel along Castle Hill Avenue, and you have the Bronx Manhattan Eight, which travels east-west Bronx to Manhattan and vice versa. Next slide, please. This land use map, again, the project area is in the center, shows you the surrounding area, and as you can see with all the yellow, is low-density residential. Cat a corner to the project area, first be from the project area, you have a one-story across Castle Hill Avenue, a one-story clinic to the north, one block there, the Castle Hill Library at the intersection of Castle Hill and Brugner Boulevard, that's outlined in blue, and just south of that one block, there's a House of Worship also in blue. Next slide, please. These are photographs, all of them of the project area. The first one is at the intersection of Castle Hill Avenue and Story Avenues, and the other two photographs, you can just see the commercial uses on the ground floors. Next slide. These slides here, the second from the, on the top, indicates the rezoning area where you have the row of five store, of five three-story buildings, and you can see that they're budding two, two-story homes. This is at the intersection of Quimby and Castle Hill Avenue. The photograph on the bottom, you're looking south along Castle Hill Avenue, the development side is to your right, and across the street, you have the clinic that I mentioned. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to develop a five-story building, mixed-use building with thirty-five units. He's also providing below-grade parking. Two of the commercial units, as you can see, fronting on Castle Hill Avenue, are commercial units, and as you go down to Story Avenue, move to the left, you have your residential lobby, you have another ground floor commercial unit, and you have an adjacent, as you go left, community facility building, as followed by the stairwell for entry and exit out of the parking area, and then there's a ramp, which is past signal controls are either end to control the traffic that allows you into the parking garage. They're required to have fifteen spaces, they've selected, decided to have, to provide twenty-two spaces. Just want to mention also that this is not within the transit area, he's at point seven miles away from the transit zone. Floors two through five contain thirty-five residential units, and the total floor area of the proposed building is forty-one thousand square feet. Of this, approximately four thousand square feet are commercial floor area and approximately two thousand five hundred square feet are community facility floor area. Next slide, please. This is your existing and proposed zoning map, the R3-2 zoning designation, low-density housing area, has a maximum floor ratio of zero point five and a maximum height of thirty-five feet. The proposed, the applicant is proposing the R6B, which will fit the five-story building that he's proposing, R6B has, has a maximum FAR of two point two and also a maximum height of fifty feet and fifty-five feet if they provide a quality ground floor. Also, the applicant has selected both options one and option two. Option one, twenty-five percent of the residential floor area, add or below sixty percent of AMI, and option two, thirty percent of the floor area targeted to households at eighty percent and below of AMI. Option one results in nine units, and option two in eleven units. Next slide, please. And this is the rendering of what the proposed building would look like. Castle Hill Avenue is a wide street, so the building is going to rise to three stories, set back ten feet and go up another two feet, and the building will rise along Story Avenue, it's a narrow street to the third floor, and then go in fifteen feet and up again. You can see that there is a rooftop recreation area, approximately two thousand five hundred square feet, and I also want to add, they're providing a forty-two-foot rear yard. This is my presentation, I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manny.
You're welcome.
And looking for any questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Deloos.
Manny, are there any, there's no solar, I'm not seeing any kind of green elements, did I, did I miss that?
I, I think you didn't, I didn't see any myself.
Okay.
And I will check into that just to make sure.
Okay, yeah, I mean, obviously, there's new citywide legislation that requires things, so I'm not seeing that as part of the, the plan.
Any other questions? Commissioner Marin. Lots of activity in your borough.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, you know, I, I know this site intimately, and I got to tell you something, it's a beautiful site, and I was always saying, God, this owner has all this land, just absolutely green space, it's beautiful. So it's nice to see that something, something is coming about on that property. I, I do agree that it is a good corner to have this, this, this development. That, I would, I would argue that, you know, while not in an official transit corridor, this area is rich in bus service, you have the twenty-two, the five, the Bronx Manhattan Eight, you have the Queens forty-four, which is the, you know, select bus service, and the Westchester train station is only about eight blocks away. So I would argue that while not in the transit corridor, and if this is affordable housing, I don't see a need for parking here. I do question the number of parking spaces, is this, are the additional parking spaces required as a result of the commuter, of the commercial spaces on the ground floor?
I don't know.
Are they required to have parking?
I don't know, but I will find out for you.
I would appreciate that, Manny, thank you. And then, and then likewise, if we can get elevations and some street views of the building, the building looks, looks pretty nice, but you know, because you're going to be seeing this from the back of the home, that face on to, I think that's not story, that is, yeah, yeah, actually, the, the, you're on story, so the homes that are in Quimby would actually face the back of this building, so the back elevation would be appreciated. But this is a nice building, and I like it. It's, it's a good addition to that community, it's growing in, in that area and makes a good argument for that corner. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, then this application is certified.
All right. The fourth item on the agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment in the Bronx Community District Ten. Our presenter is Christine Camilleri.
And I'll note that, Chris, many of us will remember when Christine made her presentation on the Bronx Animal Shelter, and she now has another unique project.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I just want to make sure my microphone is working.
Yes.
That's all right. Great, great, and thank you for, for that reminder. Good afternoon, commissioners, next slide, please. Great, and this is a private application by the Sharjo Restaurant Incorporated, doing business with Crab, the Crab Shanty Restaurant, seeking a zoning map amendment to establish a C1-2 commercial overlay within an existing R3A zoning district on a portion of block fifty-six thirty-three, part of lot one-twenty, all of lot one-twenty-two, part of lot one-twenty-four, part of lot one-twenty-seven, and part of lot one-thirty-seven in City Island Bronx Community District Ten. No development is proposed as part of this application. Next slide, please. And the rezoning area, as is pictured on this slide, is located on the northern portion of City Island in the northeast Bronx. Next slide, please. And the, actually, the previous slide, if we can just go back one. Thank you. The rezoning area, which is called out with a red dotted line on this slide, measures approximately twelve thousand square feet, and you can see here, it is, is generally bounded by Tier Street to the south, City Island Avenue to the east, and Hunter Avenue, which is mapped but unbuilt street located just to the west of the rezoning area. City Island Avenue, again, which is that corridor to the east, is a wide street that measures approximately eighty feet and has two-way traffic that runs north and south. The rezoning area has approximately one hundred feet of frontage along City Island Avenue and approximately one hundred and twenty feet of frontage along Tier Street, which is again to the south. The rezoning area you can see in this image is partially improved with a restaurant and surface parking, which is called out with the purple dotted line on this slide within the rezoning area, which again is shown in red on this. The lot located at the corner of Tier Street and City Island Avenue, which is lot one-thirty-seven, is improved with a twenty, two thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot one-story building, which is the Crab Shanty Restaurant. The portion of the rezoning area to the north of the restaurant building is improved with surface, a surface parking lot, that includes nineteen spaces. This parking was developed pursuant to a variance that was approved by the Board of Standards and Appeals, and that variance lapsed in two thousand and two. The parking for the restaurant is accessed through City, off of City Island Avenue. There is a tented outdoor seating area towards the rear of the restaurant building that you can make out on this slide as well, that, that is accessed through the parking lot and the parking area, and the tented outdoor seating area are not reflected on the certificate of occupancy for the restaurant. Next slide. And the, starting with, having, I have included some photos here for some additional context, starting with the top row on the upper left-hand side, there's a view of the rezoning area facing west from across City Island Avenue. The second photo on the upper right-hand side is a view of the rezoning area facing north, northeast, excuse me, from Tier Street, and the bottom photo is a view of the parking lot of the restaurant facing southeast, excuse me, southwest from the sidewalk from City Island Avenue. Next slide, please. And the rezoning area is called out again with red, red dotted line on this slide. All of the rezoning area and the surrounding area is located within the special City Island District, which encompasses the entirety of City Island. It's worth noting that all of Bronx Community District Ten is a lower-density growth management area. The rezoning area, as you can see here, is located within an R3A zoning district, and this area has never been zoned for commercial uses as of right. That being said, this area has been occupied by non-conforming commercial uses for quite a long time. The Crab Shanty Restaurant was first established in nineteen seventy-seven, and prior to that, for a number of years before that, and even prior to nineteen sixty-one, it was occupied by a number, a, a, a few uses, namely a silent music, movie theater, and also a post office. Other zoning districts in proximity to the rezoning area that are visible on this map are several C1-2 districts to the south along City Island Avenue, and you can see on this slide to the northwest along the waterfront, there is also an M1-1 zoning district. Land uses in this area are a mix of primarily one and two-family residential buildings on the side streets that run east and west off of City Island Avenue, as well as some one- and two-story mixed-use and commercial buildings, as well as some single-family homes along City Island Avenue to the north and south. City Island Avenue is really the main commercial corridor on City Island. There are some, in addition to those uses, there are some marine-related and commercial uses in the one, one districts along the waterfront, including the one visible on this slide. There is also a large privately-owned vacant site on block fifty-six thirty-three, directly northwest of the rezoning area. Single-family detached homes are immediately adjacent to the rezoning area, there's one right to the north and one right to the west. City Island is located outside of the city's transit zone and is fairly automobile-oriented. Bus service is accessible from the rezoning area via the BX29 bus that runs to Co-op City and Bay Plaza, and the express BX-M8, which runs to Pelham Bay and Midtown Manhattan. Next slide, please. And so the applicant requests, as part of this application, a zoning map amendment to map a C1-2 overlay over a portion of block fifty-six thirty-three consisting of a portion of lot one-twenty, lot one-twenty-two, part of lot one-twenty-four, part of lot one-twenty-seven, and part of lot one-thirty-seven. And this action would bring, would allow the longstanding business to continue to operate, and more specifically, bring the non-conforming commercial use of the restaurant along with the enclosed outdoor seating and parking uses into conformance with the use provisions of the zoning resolution. The applicant stated they intend to seek a new certificate of occupancy from the Department of Buildings, which is necessary to obtain a place of assembly certificate of operation and place of assembly permit for the restaurant. Next slide, please. And I'll, I'll just close here with this photo, which again shows a view of the front of the restaurant, which faces City Island Avenue, and, and
Thank you, Christine. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Deloos.
I'm just wondering if the, under the open streets program, whether the unenclosed external area is, would be legalized just through that alone?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that question. We actually have the same question and are, have asked the applicant team to look into that, so we should have that information by the time this comes back. It's a good point.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, and I think, did you mention right at the end of the presentation, Christine, the idea that they're going to apply for a public assembly permit? So does that, does that imply activity beyond standard restaurant use?
My, my understanding is that this would really be specific to the standard restaurant use. They, they only have intentions of continuing to operate as they have for many years.
Okay, so no expansion to catering hall or the kind of thing, I was just surprised I was just surprised, it's unusual that you see a restaurant needing a public assembly permit.
Sure, sure, no, that's exactly right. They have no plans of expansion whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. That fried shrimp advertised on the front thing looks pretty appealing right now. I wonder if we can get any.
Maybe we can gesture at the public hearing. I'm only kidding.
I swear by it.
Any other questions? Okay, this application is certified.
Thank you.
All right. The fifth item on our agenda is a referral of a non-U-LARP authorization in Manhattan Community District 1. Our presenter is Connor Clark.
And actually, before Connor makes the presentation, I would like to make a statement to the Commission. The application that you're going to see is deemed complete, so we are, we will be referring it today. But I do want to express the fact that the department has significant reservations about this application. If we look at some of the qualitative provisions in the relative sections of the zoning resolution, it notes that the regulations reflect best practices to address sustainability goals, which we know are a key department mandate and that the Commission takes seriously. We also note that most developments in Manhattan don't have any parking, especially in the Manhattan core. There's nothing unique to this development that would suggest that it needs two parking spaces. In fact, this building has existed for over 120 years without parking, and that includes when it was converted from its original use as a commercial/manufacturing building to residential uses in 1975. The building has had residents for decades who survived at this location without any parking spaces. The most notable change for the development since the 70s is that the applicant is reducing the number of dwelling units in the building from 25 to 17, creating more space for a fewer number of people. The applicant is also seeking these two parking spaces. Generally, these actions don't reflect the city's sustainability goals. If we also look at the findings of Section 13-442, there's a finding that the parking facility will not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. The Tribeca Mixed Use District was created to permit limited residential use in this once-industrial area. We've seen residential use in the area blossom over the last 20 years, and the streetscape has changed. Vestry Street used to have many curb cuts to account for the loading and unloading of manufacturing uses. Many, if not most, of these buildings no longer have the need for these outdated artifacts. Currently, the south side of Vestry Street doesn't have a single curb cut from the waterfront to Greenwich Street, as the loading docks are no longer in use. On the north side of Vestry Street, again, from the waterfront to Greenwich Street, there are two curb cuts. There's a new residential building directly across the street from the proposed development that has a single curb cut for a parking garage with 42 parking spaces. Next to that building is a small two-story brick building, which has a longstanding curb cut, although it's not clear whether it's being used for a loading area anymore. There are no other curb cuts or active parking uses on Vestry Street from the water to Greenwich Street. We believe the streetscape has changed over the years, and it is now very much a streetscape of residential and mixed-use developments and not car-dependent manufacturing or warehousing tenants in car-oriented buildings. For those reasons, while the department is bringing forward this application, we are not supportive of the authorization that is being sought. And with that, I'll turn it over to Connor. If we could call up the presentation.
Okay, this is Stephen Johnson. I'll continue with the presentation from this point, and Connor can jump in if he's able to get on board. So this is a private application by IRG67 LLC, which seeks an authorization under Section 13442 to build a two-space accessory parking facility in an existing building at 67 Vestry Street in Manhattan Community District 1. Currently, the building contains 24 residential dwelling units. After it is renovated, it will contain 17. Now, Section 13442 allows for the construction of parking facilities in the Manhattan core of up to 15 spaces in existing buildings that do not already have parking. The applicant has obtained two waivers from the Department of Buildings related to the garage, one to allow a curb cut to be less than 50 feet from an intersection, and a second to reduce the minimum allowable area per parking space in a garage. Next slide, please. The development site, Block 218, Lot 24, is located in the lower west side of Manhattan on the corner of Vestry Street and West Street, the last street before the Hudson River. The development site outlined in red on the map is bounded by Lake Street on the south and Washington Street on the east. The building is nine stories in height. It was constructed in 1895 to 1896 and was altered in 1910 to remove the original cornice and add two stories. As the building was previously in an M-24 district in 1975, the Board of Standards and Appeals granted a variance to allow the fourth through ninth floors of the building to be converted to residential use. The building is currently being altered to relocate the, some existing floor area to the roof where the maximum permitted building height, to be within the maximum permitted building height, and to convert additional floor area in the building to residential use. Next slide, please. The development site is located in a C-638 zoning district and is within Area 4 of the special Tribeca Mixed Use District. It has an FAR of 8.65. The zoning districts in the area surrounding the development site include a large C-628 district within the TMU district, mapped to the north and east of the development site, and a C-64 district outside of the TMU district, mapped to the south of the development site. The land uses within the surrounding area are predominantly mixed-use buildings and with commercial use on the lower floors and residences above it. Hudson River Park is located along the waterfront to the west of the development site. The Canal Street One train station is located four blocks to the east, and the A train station is one block further. The M-20 bus runs north along Hudson Street and south along Barrick Street. Next slide, please. So the photo on the left shows the development site on Vestry Street facing southwest. The proposed garage entrance is outlined in red in that image. This photo also shows that the first floor has been elevated about two to three feet due to the existence of the loading dock, which allowed trucks to make deliveries during the building's manufacturing days. The photo on the right shows the development site facing east from West Street. Next slide, please. So the photo on the left shows the development site in its original form before the 1910 renovation that added two stories. The photo on the right shows the development site's western facade from West Street. Next slide, please. The Vestry Street side of the building, shown here, is currently taking up by five non-operational commercial loading bays with a 39-foot, 3-inch curb cut. As shown in the photo on the left, these would be taken out, and the curb cut would be replaced by a smaller 12-foot-wide curb cut. The elevation on the right shows the proposed facade on Vestry Street with the garage and building entrances at curb level. The current first floor, which is raised to serve the loading dock, would be lowered to curb level, allowing cars to access the garage without changing the elevation. Pedestrian improvements would also be made to Vestry Street, where the loading dock currently takes up a portion of the sidewalk, as well as to West Street, where the building also has frontages. These would conclude sidewalk reconstruction, cobblestone repair, tree pit reconstruction, and the removal or fill of the substructure below sidewalk, including the vaults and stairs, among other items. As you can see on the photo on the left, that's typical of a lot of the buildings in this area is they have these raised loading docks for the trucks to back into and unload. Next slide, please. So this site plan shows the general layout of the building, including the location of the garage outlined in red, along with the 12-foot curb cut, including splays, and the two entrances to the building on the upper right of the drawing. This drawing also shows the garage entrance is approximately 28 feet from the intersection with West Street. Since the zoning resolution does not permit a garage entrance to be less than 50 feet from an intersection, the applicant obtained a waiver from DOB to allow for this condition contingent upon the approval of this application. Next slide, please. This drawing shows the details of the proposed garage. Drivers would turn from West Street onto one-way eastbound Vestry Street, which is paved in cobblestones, and turn right into the garage by way of the 12-foot curb cut. A remote-control device would allow drivers to open the single garage door prior to arrival. The garage includes one wide-angle mirror on each side of the entrance for drivers to use while exiting the garage, because they could be backing out onto the sidewalk. A hardwired driveway door alarm, both visual and audible alarms, located in the exit to alert pedestrians to an exiting vehicle. A stop sign is mounted on a column for exiting vehicles, and there is a speed bump. The garage has a total of 455 square feet, which comes out to 228 square feet per parking space. Since the zoning resolution states that a garage must not have less than 300 square feet per parking space, the applicant obtained a waiver from DOB to allow for this condition contingent upon approval of this application. Next slide, please. So we have our neighborhood character diagram here. It shows Vestry Street with the southern side of the street at the top of the diagram, and the northern side of the street at the bottom. As you can see, the development site is located in the upper right-hand corner and is outlined in red. So between West Street and Greenwich Street, there are two existing curb cuts on Vestry. The first is across the street from the development site, which is 70 Vestry Street, and it has a 42-space residential accessory garage in 426 Washington Street has a curb cut for loading purposes. It is a very narrow building, and it's not clear whether the curb cut is still being used for any loading purposes. There are no other curb cuts in this two-block stretch, and loading bays on the frontage of buildings along Vestry have been repurposed. Between Greenwich Street and Hudson, there are additional curb cuts, but one 90-foot-wide curb cut has been repurposed for pedestrian access, and the associated loading dock has been converted to a pedestrian walkway, including flower pots, a wheelchair ramp, and it's kind of functions almost as a stoop, you know, the classic Brooklyn stoop, that people walk up to it and enter to the building. Next slide, please. So in summary, the applicant is requesting authorization under Section 13442 for a two-space garage in an existing 17-unit building. As part of this project, they propose to reduce the current 39-foot, 3-inch curb cut to 12 feet. The findings for Section 13442 indicate that, first, the garage entrance was not obstruct pedestrian flow or cause conflicts between pedestrians and motorists; and, second, the entrance must not disrupt the efficient functioning of streets, including lanes for specific users such as buses or bikes; and, third, the garage must not contribute to congestion; and, fourth, finally, the garage must be consistent with the streetscape character. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Commissioner Levin.
Thank you, Stephen. I ought to say, you know, in addition to the concerns expressed by the Chair, this seems like a tremendous amount of effort to go through for two parking spaces. Who's going to use these spaces?
Whoever can afford to live in the building.
Okay, but it seems like there might be 15 other people who can afford to live in the building, too. What are they going to do about parking? I mean, I just don't understand the rationale for, I mean, I can see them coming in for, we've seen numbers of applications in conversion situations where they're looking for as many parking spaces as there are units in the building. Two units here seems kind of de minimis to me, but maybe they can explain it when they come back.
There's not a lot of space to put in more parking, because it's already filled up with support and infrastructure. They were able to carve out this little space for two cars, and it's obviously a much-wanted amenity for certain people, and it's, you know, they see it as something that it's worth undertaking.
Okay, okay, yeah, I mean, my thought is if it's, you know, if you can only fit two in, why fit any? But I imagine we can discuss that at the public hearing.
So I believe this is an authorization.
Oh, this is an authorization, so no public hearing, okay.
So, you know, whatever comes out of this meeting today and the Community Board, we can talk with the applicant, and they can provide any responses that they see fit.
Okay, but I'm sure we'll have a comprehensive response from the Community Board as well.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to get further clarification. Obviously, the applicant argues that they meet the three findings enunciated under the section. Is the concern of the department that they don't meet the findings or one of the findings, or that it simply is not consistent with, you know, the overall philosophy of the department with regard to encouraging, you know, more vehicular use in Tribeca?
I think you really hit it on the head there. The two, I think, main issues is the sustainability goals for our mandate in the city, and, of course, it doesn't meet, we believe it doesn't meet one of the findings. So I think in general, we would want every existing building that was, did not have parking, start, you know, apply for one or two parking spaces. It just is not a sustainable way to have transportation around the city. But in regards to the particular finding of the streetscape character, this area has changed greatly over the years, as you all are aware, Commissioners. So it's just more of a residential neighborhood now. There's not really a need to put in two parking spaces at this location, and there are no other curb cuts or very limited curb cuts on the block, mainly related to new buildings, which are permitted as rights to put in parking up to a certain number.
I want to assure the Vice Chair that the sustainability goals underpin everything that we do, but we also follow the language of the zoning text. And the first three of the findings, it would be with just two parking spaces, could probably be met, but we believe that it's the fourth requirement that the parking facility will not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape that, again, reinforces our sustainability goals, but we don't believe that that finding is met, and that's where our disagreement is with the applicant and its representatives.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we will refer this to the Community Board for 45 days.
All right, moving on to the sixth item on our agenda is a referral of a non-U-LARP authorization in Manhattan Community District 5. I believe Connor is still trying to log in. Oh, there we go.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know what happened before. My microphone was functioning fine, but for whatever reason, you guys couldn't hear me.
All right, so you're on for 110 East 16th Street, so go ahead.
I just wanted to make a note, though. I was saying before that there's some renovation going on next door, so I told them to be quiet for this hour, but it seems like they've started again. So just bear with me, it shouldn't be too bad. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by East 16th Street Owner LLC, which seeks an authorization under Section 11411 to renew a parking special permit granted under the 1916 zoning resolution for a 196-space public parking garage at 110 East 16th Street, located a half-block east of Union Square Park in Manhattan Community District 5. An authorization under 11411 allows non-conforming uses that were granted before the implementation of the 1961 zoning resolution by special permit or other means to be extended for a period of 10 years. In this case, the applicant seeks an extension of five years. Next slide. The garage lane, which is located at Block 871, Lot 74, and outlined in red on the map, lies on the block surrounded by Union Square east to the west, Irving Place to the east, East 16th Street to the north, and East 15th Street to the south. The development site is the zoning lot that encompasses Lot 74 and 10, outlined in the white dotted line on the map. The authorization would allow the applicant to continue the use of Lot 74 as a 196-space parking garage. In 1960, the CPC issued a special permit pursuant to the 1916 zoning resolution, allowing for the operation of an eight-story garage on Lot 74. allowing for the operation of an eight-story garage on Lot 74. In 1961, the special permit was amended to allow the garage to be nine stories tall. The special permit has been renewed four times since pursuant to authorizations in 1986, 1997, 2007, and 2017. As part of the 2017 renewal, the CPC granted a five-year extension, and changes to the garage were requested by the CPC. The single curb cut for the garage entrances and exit was split in two and significantly reduced in width. Screening was added to the garage facade to shield the view of parked cars from the sidewalk. The 2017 five-year renewal expires on March 9, 2021, and the proposed authorization would allow for an additional five-year extension. In 2018, the CPC granted special permits pursuant to Sections 74, 711, and 1345 to facilitate the redevelopment of the development site with a mixed-use predominantly residential building. The applicant continues to plan for the redevelopment of the development site pursuant to the special permits, but there is no target date to begin the construction due to the current market conditions. The applicant proposes to continue the operating garage until then. Next slide. The area map shows the development site is located in a C62A zoning district, which is a contextual district with a maximum FAR of six. The surrounding area to the west and south of the development site consists primarily of C6 commercial districts, a manufacturing district, M15M to the northwest, and residential districts R8B and R8A to the north and east. The 17th Street Irving Place Historic District is located just to the north of the development site. The development site is surrounded by a mix of commercial and residential uses, as well as some educational institutions. Union Square Park is located a half-block to the west, and Stuyvesant Square Park is located two blocks to the east. The area is well-served by public transit with the Union Square Station providing access to the 456 L-N-Q-R and W trains, located two blocks from the development site, and the M14 SBS bus runs east-west and 14th Street, and several other local bus routes serve the area. Next slide. These side photos show the entrance to the garage. The photo on the left is tilted to the east, showing one-way eastbound East 16th Street. The photo on the right shows the three entrance lanes on the right and the exit lane on the left. In both photos, the screening installed after the 2017 renewal can be seen above the entrance and exit. Next slide. The photo on the left shows the sidewalk outside of the garage and the garage on the right. And the photo on the right shows East 16th Street facing towards Union Square with the garage on the left. Next slide. The site plan shows the development site as it exists today, comprised of Lot 10 to the left and Lot 74 to the right. East 16th Street, a 60-foot-wide street, runs along the right-hand portion of the drawing with a 10-foot-wide curb cut, providing access to the westernmost entrance, that's at the top of the drawing, and a 35-foot-wide curb cut, providing access to the other two entrance lanes and the exit lane. That's one curb cut. And this drawing also shows the portions of the curb cuts that were filled in in gray after the 2017 special permit renewal. Next slide. This slide shows the parking plan for 110 East 16th Street, with the ground floor on the left and the second floor on the right. Cars would turn right into the garage from eastbound East 16th Street, which runs along the bottom of the drawings, and enter the garage in one of the three entrance lanes marked with the eight cross-hatched reservoir spaces. An attendant would drive the car to one of the elevators at the top of the drawing and proceed to one of the parking levels above. Next slide. So the drawing to the left shows the layout for floors 3 through 9, and the drawing to the right shows the layout for the roof. Next slide. The photo on the left shows a recent view of the screening installed after the 2017 renewal. There is no significant deterioration that we can see. Next slide. So to sum up, the applicant seeks an authorization pursuant to Section 11411 to renew the parking special permit granted under the pre-1961 zoning resolution. As mandated by Section 1141, the original use granted by the special permit has not increased, and the applicant seeks a five-year renewal, which is less than the maximum of 10 years indicated in Section 11411. That said, the applicant would also be open to further 10-year renewal. They are seeking the five-year renewal simply to be consistent with the previous five-year renewal. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll just note for the commissioners that I had walked by this site in mid-September. And while one would hardly call it an architectural marvel, the screening that the commission had required as part of prior approvals does make an improvement to the streetscape. The other thing that I'll note is that this site is just two blocks north of the tech hub that the commission approved, the EDC project, and it is going up quickly. It's really a delight to see it proceeding through construction. And with that, I will call on Commissioner Dweck.
I just want to comment that I'm happy to note. I think this is the first time I've seen a parking renewal permit come to us prior to its expiration, so we must be doing something right.
You are so right, Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, Connor, I just wanted to ask about the... First off, I agree, whoever thought I'd compliment what the exterior of a parking garage looks like? But the screening is a significant improvement, and I'm glad we required that to happen, that they did it. Can you confirm that the rearrangement of the entrances and the exits on the ground floor is what we required back in 2017? I can't really remember what we did, but have they done what they said they were going to do on the ground floor?
Yeah, we checked with them on that. There was one single curb cut, I think it was 60-something feet, and they split it in two. And that was what was required from the...
Yeah, and I think they had entrances, a couple of exits, or whatever it was. It was kind of a mess, but...
Yeah, they've kind of divided it.
Okay, and so they've done what they were supposed to do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair, I would just observe that Connor's neighbors obviously don't know who they're disturbing.
And on that note of levity, we will refer this to the community board for 45 days.
All right. Moving on, the seventh item on our agenda is a referral of a minor modification to a previously-approved special permit and a modification of a restrictive declaration in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Aska Mo-Yuden, giving her first presentation to the commission. Aska? Yes, yes, we'll get the presentation up here shortly. There we go.
So close.
What happened there?
Let's hope the third time's a charm.
Success.
Great. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by 712 Fifth Avenue LP for a minor modification to a previously-approved special permit. Next slide, please. The proposal is for a minor modification to enable design changes to a publicly-accessible atrium within a designated landmark building on Fifth Avenue in the Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan Community District 5. Next slide, please. The building, the subject building, commonly known as 712 Fifth Avenue, is located on the corner of Fifth Avenue and West 56th Street and consists of a 50-story commercial building with retail on the first through fourth floors and office use on the fifth through 50th floors. The Office Tower has its lobby entrance on West 56th Avenue and is set back from the Fifth Avenue building. The Fifth Avenue frontage is occupied by three buildings, as seen in the image on the right, which are all part of the same tax lot as the Office Tower, visible in the image on the left. Two of these buildings are individually-designated landmark structures, the Risoli Building at 712 Fifth Avenue and the Cody Building at 714 Fifth Avenue. The third building is a five-story infill building at 716 Fifth Avenue. The atrium where the design changes are proposed is located within the Cody Building in the middle. This image also shows the building on the corner of Fifth Avenue and West 56th Street, which is occupied by Harry Winston for retail purposes, but this building is not part of the same zoning lot as the subject building. Next slide, please. The project area encompasses a zoning lot that includes both Lot 38, which is improved for the subject building, and Lot 30, which is improved with the Fifth Avenue Presbyterian Church located at the corner of Fifth Avenue and West 55th Street, and the seven-story parish house at 7 West 50th Street. This slide shows the subject building highlighted in yellow, which includes the 50-story tower and the three buildings fronting on Fifth Avenue. The zoning lot is located in the Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan, which is a central business district characterized by large office buildings, department stores, and hotels. Next slide, please. The zoning lot is split between C53 and C5P zoning districts and is located within the Fifth Avenue sub-district of the Special Midtown District. The atrium space is fully located within the C53 portion of the zoning lot. C53 is a high-density central commercial district designation that permits commercial, residential, and community facility uses with a maximum permitted base FAR of 15. Next slide, please. The subject building was developed in accordance with a special permit in 1986 pursuant to ZR Section 74, 711, that modified certain bulk and use regulations and district plan elements of the Special Midtown District to permit a 52-story mixed-use retail hotel and office building. As part of the approval, a publicly-accessible atrium was established to allow the public to view the historical leak windows located in the Fifth Avenue facade of the Cody Building. In 1987, the City Planning Commission approved a minor modification to the special permit to allow conversion of retail, hotel, residential, and office-floor area into office and retail-floor area. The retail space of the subject building was also modified to accommodate the needs of the tenant at the time. Harry Bendel and unobstructed viewing paths or balconies were added around the atrium on the second to fourth floors of the three buildings. There were two additional minor modifications in 2004 and 2008 that modified the design and use of the atrium and viewing paths. Next slide, please. As a result of these modifications, the existing atrium, as it is approved, contains these viewing paths, highlighted in red here, along its sides to provide the public an opportunity to view the historical leak windows, highlighted in yellow, located along the Fifth Avenue facade of the Cody Building. Since all three buildings were leased by Henry Bendel, they are all internally-connected. While the atrium, along with the eastern and western viewing paths, are located within the Cody Building in the middle, the southern viewing paths are located within the adjacent Risoli Building on the left, and northern viewing paths are located within the infill building on the right. The image on the right shows a view of the leak windows from the ground floor of the atrium, looking towards Fifth Avenue. Next slide, please. These images provide a look inside the atrium and the viewing paths. The first image shows the leak windows facing Fifth Avenue located in the Cody Building. The second image shows the northern viewing paths, looking at the infill building. And the third image shows the western viewing paths, looking at the Cody Building facing away from Fifth Avenue. Next slide, please. The proposed redesign of the Fifth Avenue atrium will reestablish the demising wall between the Cody Building and the infill building, illustrated on this plan in the solid blue line. This would allow Harry Winston, currently located at 718 Fifth Avenue, shown in gray, to lease and occupy space in the 716 Fifth Avenue infill building. While the two buildings will be internally-connected, the zoning lot is not proposed to be changed, and the two buildings will continue to exist on separate zoning lots. In order to accommodate this partition, the northern viewing paths would be removed, and the existing ADA-compliant elevator located in the infill building will be relocated next to the atrium within the Cody Building. The new location of the elevator is highlighted in green here. Next slide, please. The proposed redesign will also remove two eastern viewing paths on the third and fourth floors that were originally added to the atrium via minor modification in 1987. These two viewing paths, or catwalks, pass in front of the leak windows, allowing users to have an up-close experience when the windows rich architectural detailing. However, the removal would improve views of the windows from both the ground floor and the upper viewing balconies inside the atrium. The catwalk on the second floor will be reconstructed to comply with ADA accessibility requirements, which the existing catwalk does not, and will continue to provide an up-close view of the windows. Additionally, new lighting would be installed that accentuates the windows both during the day and at night, and new signage information boards will be added, which would include further information on the history of the windows. Next slide, please. These renderings comparing the existing and proposed atrium view shows the improved public experience of the windows from the ground floor. As you can see, the removal of the third and fourth-floor catwalks and reconstruction of the second-floor catwalk with thinner and more translucent materials would increase visibility of the windows from the atrium's ground floor. In addition, the new design would allow for more light to filter through to the atrium, further improving the public's experience of the space. Next slide, please. Since two of these buildings are landmark structures, the Landmarks Preservation Commission reviewed the proposal as well. The applicant received a permit for minor work for an updated pop signage on the exterior of the Fifth Avenue landmark building and a certificate of no effect for the interior improvements. Next slide, please. In summary, the applicant is seeking approval of a minor modification to make these interior changes. This is a minor modification because the proposed modifications would not affect the basis of the previous CPC approvals or the findings made at the time of the original special permit. The special permit was premised on granting both modifications in exchange for the restoration and long-term preservation of the two individual landmarks, things for a harmonious relationship with the surrounding context. The proposed modifications are almost entirely within the exterior of the subject building, except for a proposed pop sign at the Fifth Avenue entrance, and would not affect any of the waivers granted under the special permit. The proposal was brought to the commission because the proposed modification changed approved plans, which can only be achieved through a minor modification. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Aska. Questions from the commission? Okay, seeing no raised hands, we will refer this to the community board for 45 days.
Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, I was just going to make a comment that, you know, I think it's actually a beautiful modification, actually. I think that, you know, Richard Southwick at Bible and Bell do a lot of this work, and I think it's being handled very elegantly, and it looks like an improvement to me. I like it.
Thank you. And let me check again. Okay, I'm missing something. This is ready to be referred to the community board for 45 days.
All right. Moving on to the eighth item on our agenda, a certification of a special permit in Brooklyn Community District 13. Our presenter is Colin Lee. Colin?
Good afternoon, and next slide. And this is an application by Bedford Carp Realty 3 LLC to request a zoning special permit to allow a commercial use in the special Coney Island mixed-use district to facilitate the development of a new commercial warehouse at 2706 West 16th Street. Next slide. The project is located in the Coney Island neighborhood of Brooklyn and Community District 13. Next slide. The area, the surrounding area is located within the special Coney Island mixed-use district, is bounded by Coney Island Creek to the north, Cropsy Avenue to the west, Neptune Avenue to the south, and Stillwell Avenue to the east. The district was established in the mid-1970s, and it predates MX districts. The entire special Coney Island mixed-use district is a M12 zoning district that contains provisions to stabilize residential uses in conjunction with allowing for modest growth of manufacturing and commercial uses in specified locations. The CEO regulates the location of residential, commercial, and certain manufacturing uses to specified streets, limits the size of zoning lots for as-of-right development, and provides measures to ensure the general safety of the district. The district allows... The district allows existing residential buildings to be improved and enlarged, and new residential infill to be developed if adjacent to an existing residence or community facility. Also, new commercial uses are allowed on Neptune, Cropsey, and Stillwell Avenues. Any new commercial uses on any other streets in the district must obtain a special permit from the City Planning Commission. Major thoroughfares throughout the area are the Belt Parkway to the north, which is accessible via Cropsey Avenue to the west and Neptune Avenue to the south of the development site in red. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation. Approximately half a mile south is the Stillwell Avenue D, F, N, and Q subway station, and multiple buses are located along Cropsey and Neptune Avenues. Next slide. The proposed development site is on a five thousand five hundred square-foot rectangular interior lot on the western side of West Sixteenth Street. The site is currently vacant. All of the adjacent lots bordering the proposed development site are non-residential uses. Lot thirty-two is a commercial building that contains T-Mobile, Autozone, and a pet supply store. Lots thirty-one, thirty-two, and seventy-six are vacant, and Lot twenty-nine contains parking facilities. Next slide. The area map here displays a mix of land uses such as light industrial, parking facilities, commercial, and residential developments. The residential developments are predominantly two-to-three-story homes, mixed in with one-to-two-story light industrial and auto repair shops. In terms of zoning, the development site is within the special Coney Island mixed-use district, and the entire district is zone M one-two. This area is also within the one percent chance flood zone. Next slide. And here are some area photos. Both the photos on the left and the right are views to the west and northwest along West Sixteenth Street facing the development site. Next slide. And on the left is a view northeast facing the, facing residential buildings on the eastern side of West Sixteenth Street. And on the right is a view north of the sidewalk along the western side of West Sixteenth Street in front of the development site. Next slide. The proposed development is a two-story use group sixteen commercial warehouse for open storage of construction materials with an F A R of one point eight one at approximately nine thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. The first floor will be sixteen feet tall at approximately five thousand five hundred square feet, and the second floor is proposed to be twelve feet tall at four thousand seven hundred square feet. One twenty-foot loading berth will be provided to allow trucks to not obstruct the street while loading, and the building will be designed to meet the requirements to minimize effects of flooding and comply with Appendix G of the Building Code for Flood-Resisting Construction. Next slide. And as previously mentioned, as-of-right development for new commercial uses are only allowed on Neptune, Cropsey, and Stillwell Avenues. Any new commercial uses on any other streets in the district must obtain a special permit from the City Planning Commission. Next slide. In pursuant to this section, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow for commercial use. And in order for the special permit to be granted, the following findings must be made. The use will comply with M one performance standards. The additional truck traffic generated by the use or yard modifications will not create harmful, congested, or dangerous conditions. The change of use from residential to use group M or commercial uses shall not displace or preempt any building which is essential to the functioning and growth of existing residents within the district. And the City Planning Commission may prescribe additional appropriate conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area. In response to the findings, the applicant explained that the commercial warehouse is a small facility that will store only construction materials such as lumber and steel. The warehouse is fully, the warehouse would fully comply with the performance standards of the M one district. And the applicant explained that the proposed warehouse would not, would not generate significant, would not generate a significant increase in truck traffic. On average, two delivery trucks will enter and exit the area on a typical weekday. Additional details regarding the findings can be found in the Statement of Findings. Next slide. And as a requirement for the special permit, the applicant must show a site plan that includes the location and the proposed use of all buildings or other structures on the site, along with the location of all vehicular entrances and exits to the City Planning Commission. Next slide. And in order to facilitate the newly proposed commercial warehouse, the applicant is requesting a special permit. The proposed warehouse is consistent with the goals of the special Coney Island mixed-use district and provides an active use on a site that is vacant. Thank you, and I'm ready to take questions from any.
Thank you, Colin. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you, Colin. I'm interested in knowing a little more about the applicant and how they propose, how, how this location relates to the rest of their business, because they do indicate they're using it purely for storage, so.
Yes, yes, um, so the applicant runs a construction company, and so most of the materials that'll be stored there are like lumber and steel for construction of like, um, in other areas throughout Brooklyn. And also, um, it'll be like three workers on site, so it's, it's, it's a fairly small, um, business, but it's, it's just used for construction materials.
Okay, and then because, of course, the, you know, the whole purpose of the special permit was to allow, to support residential and allow commercial infill that was consistent with the residential and to allow, um, you know, provide job opportunities for people who could work and live in the same neighborhoods, and I'm not sure storage for lumberyard necessarily complies with that. The last, last time we had one of these, it was for, um, it was over on, what was it, Fifteenth Street? For a mail-order business and folks who worked there, I think, worked and lived in the neighborhood. This one isn't exactly that, but it seems like a pretty modest use proposal. Anyway, but anyway, what, that will be on my mind as we follow this one through the process, as being sure that we're being consistent with what the goals of this special permit are.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Delos.
Commissioner Levin actually asked my question.
Okay, that's sufficient. And I do not see other hands raised, and so this application is certified.
Thank you.
The ninth item on our agenda is a non-U L R referral of a zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Two, and our presenter is Amrita Mahesh.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application requesting a zoning text amendment to modify Z R Section one oh one dash eleven Special Ground Floor Use Regulations within the special downtown Brooklyn district. This action would modify the ground floor use requirements to allow all non-residential uses permitted by the underlying zoning district at an existing building located at eighty-six Fleet Place. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, please. The project site is located in the downtown Brooklyn neighborhood of Community District Two in Brooklyn. Next slide, please. The project site is located just east of Flatbush Avenue Extension along Myrtle Avenue between Fleet Place and a de-mapped portion of Prince Street. Next slide, please. The site is located within the special downtown Brooklyn district, which is mapped primarily with high-density commercial zoning district, which allow a mix of commercial, residential, and community facility uses. The project site is within a C six-four zoning district and is subject to special ground floor use regulations, which require retail continuity at certain locations, including Myrtle Avenue. The retail continuity requirements are intended to ensure an active and vibrant streetscape. Next slide, please. The site is improved with a thirty-two-story, approximately three hundred and ninety-four thousand square-foot mixed-use building substantially completed in twenty seventeen. Immediately to the east of the project site are three mixed-use buildings. Further east is University Towers, a three-building co-op, as well as Fort Green Park and the Fort Green and Clinton Hill neighborhoods. Both neighborhoods are primarily residential, consisting of three-to-five-story brownstones, medium-density apartment buildings along major corridors, and a range of community facility uses. To the north of the project site are three NYCHA communities, Ingersoll Houses, Walt Whitman Houses, and Farragut Houses. To the south of the project site is the Brooklyn campus of Long Island University and the Brooklyn Hospital Center. And finally, to the west of the project site are several residential and mixed-use developments along Flatbush Avenue Extension and the Metrotech Campus. Metrotech includes several higher educational institutions and federal, state, and local municipal offices. Next slide, please. Here are some images of the project site and surrounding areas looking south and southwest along Myrtle Avenue. Next slide, please. To the left is an image of the project's ground floor condition along Myrtle Avenue, looking east, and to the right is an image along Fleet Place, looking south. Next slide, please. And here are some additional images of the surrounding area along Myrtle Avenue. Next slide, please. The applicant sought a similar text amendment, which was approved in June of twenty eighteen, to allow all non-residential uses under the underlying C two-four R seven-one district on the ground floors of buildings at block two zero six one, lots one, one oh one, and one ten. The buildings are currently occupied with a mix of stores, community facilities, including a medical treatment center and local service establishments. The eighty-six Fleet Place site was not included when the previous amendment was sought. The applicant is currently seeking the same action to replace the retail continuity requirement with a non-residential requirement at the project site. Next slide, please. The applicant states that they have explored multiple avenues to identify tenants to occupy the ground floor space since twenty sixteen. They have utilized the services of brokers, held open houses, and hosted property tours, advertised the space on major listing services, and sought the assistance of the local Business Improvement District. However, the space has never been filled since its completion. According to the applicant, uh, the proximity to Fort Green Park and several large Tower in the Park residential developments makes the project area more residential in character, in contrast to areas most centrally located within the special district, and therefore better suited for a broader range of uses, including neighborhood service establishments and community facility uses that would benefit local residents. The applicant also notes that the project area does not have the benefit of fronting on Flatbush Avenue Extension. The applicant states that they've identified potential tenants, including a daycare facility and a medical facility, which they believe would benefit the surrounding community by providing much-needed services. The applicant has also expressed willingness to work with future tenants to create visual interest in the storefronts, such as creating window displays or space for a daycare facility to showcase children's artwork to ensure a vibrant streetscape condition in keeping with the goals of the special district. Next slide, please. The proposed zoning text amendment would allow the applicant to rent the space to these community facility uses, as well as other non-residential uses permitted in the underlying C six-four district, including but not, uh, but not limited to community facilities, such as treatment healthcare centers, schools, non-commercial clubs, and wholesale establishments. Next slide, please. Next slide. The proposed actions would allow the approximately ten thousand square-foot ground floor retail space to be used for community facility uses and all non-residential uses permitted by the underlying C six-four zoning district for the building fronting on Myrtle Avenue between Fleet Place and the prolongation of Prince Street. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Amrita. Questions from the commission? Seeing none, either electronically or on the screen, what we will do is refer this to the community board and the borough president for forty-five days.
Thank you.
The tenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Fourteen. Our presenter is Amy Jin.
Hello.
Amy.
Just waiting for the presentation to load. All right, so this is an application by sixteen hundred twenty Realty Corp. for a zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of a block from an R six A C two-four district to an R seven D C two-four district, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use development with a total of eighty-five residential units, twenty-one of which would be affordable and commercial space on the ground floor. Next slide, please. The project area is located in the Ditmas Park neighborhood in Brooklyn Community District Fourteen. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is largely comprised of residential uses with some commercial and community facility uses. The surrounding area is zoned R three X to the north, R seven A to the south and east, and R six, uh, eight, sorry, R six A C two-four to the west. Uh, R three X is a low-density residential district characterized by one and two-family detached homes. R three X districts permit a maximum F A R of zero point five, which may be increased to zero point six with an attic allowance. Buildings may rise to a maximum height of thirty-five feet. R seven A districts permit a maximum F A R of four for residential and community facility uses that increase to four point six for residential use with inclusionary housing. The R seven A districts here are within a voluntary inclusionary housing area. R six A districts permit a maximum F A R of three for residential and community facility uses. C two-four commercial overlays permit a maximum F A R of two for commercial uses when mapped within, within an R six A district. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation and located within the transit zone. The Q subway line has a stop located less than one block west of the project area. Additionally, several bus lines run along Cortellou Road. Next slide, please. So in this bird's eye view, we can see that the surrounding area is characterized primarily by four-to-eight-story multifamily apartment buildings between Cortellou and Dorchester Roads of around four to five F A R. The neighborhood is amenity-rich, with Cortellou serving as a local commercial corridor. Flatbush Food Co-op is two blocks down from the project area. Next slide, please. These are views of the project area. Currently, there is a laundromat and supermarket on the site. Next slide. The proposed development consists of a nine-story mixed-use building with eighty-five dwelling units, twenty-one of which would be designated permanently affordable and ground-floor commercial use at sixteen twenty Cortellou Road. The proposed development is expected to rise to a height of a hundred and two feet and contain approximately eighty-three thousand square feet of floor area with an F A R of five point six, including approximately seventy-three thousand square feet of residential floor area and ten thousand square feet of commercial floor area on the ground floor. Approximately six thousand of this ten thousand square feet will be used for a supermarket, and the remaining floor area, which is around three to four thousand square feet, will be used for other retail use. The proposed development contains forty-four accessory parking spaces in the cellar level accessible via ramp on East Sixteenth Street. The existing supermarket on the site is the proposed tenant of the new building. Next slide, please. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to rezone an R six A C two-four district to an R seven D C two-four district over the northern portion of the block. When mapped with an inclusionary housing area, R seven D allows a maximum F A R of five point six for residential uses and a maximum base in building height of ninety feet and a hundred and ten feet, respectively, which can be increased by five feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is generally required for fifty percent of the market-rate dwelling units and optional for income-restricted housing units within the transit zone. C two-four is a commercial overlay that permits a maximum commercial F A R of two, and when paired with an R seven D district, uh, triggers a requirement for the ground floor frontage to be either commercial or community facility uses. to be either commercial or community facility uses to a depth of 30 feet. C-24 commercial overlays allow a range of local retail uses, including neighborhood grocery stores, restaurants, and beauty parlors with low parking requirements. Next slide, please. In addition, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment to create an MIH area with options 1 and 2 co-terminous with the rezoning area. Next slide, please. CB14 held a public hearing on October 21st, 2020, and on November 9th voted to approve the action with the following conditions. On affordability, the board voted to increase the number of affordable units offered at 40% AMI and partner with local organizations to engage CB14 residents with application readiness for the housing lottery. On setbacks, the board voted to configure the building so that the setbacks minimized visual imposition on neighboring properties. On shadows and environmental study, the board voted to ask the applicant to expand both. The board also would like the applicant to expand their traffic study and support community public transit needs. And lastly, the board would like the applicant to underwrite a fiduciary account where upfront funding could only be withdrawn by DPR towards maintenance and programming support for the Cortellou Road tot lot, which is a nearby playground. So I don't have the BP's recommendations in the presentation, but the borough president submitted his recommendations today at noon. To quickly summarize, the borough president recommended to approve the application with conditions and will share his recommendations with the commissioners in full after this review session. I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Questions? Commissioner Lewis.
Well, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of thoughtful recommendations that the community board included. And I'm just wondering what the applicant's response was to those.
So the applicant has been in communication with the community board, but I think they would be best to respond to those at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, I mean, one thing I'd like to hear about then is obviously where they're at on that and then what the thoughts are around enforceability, given some of the things that have been requested.
Thank you. Commissioner Tweek.
Thank you. As I'm sure the applicant's paying attention, I would just like to mention to them that if they can respond to the borough president's comments on Wednesday after I've had a chance and everybody's had a chance to read them, so at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Bernie.
I was just wondering, do we know what an as-of-right building would look like on the site under the present zoning?
Give me one second. So an R-6A district has a maximum height. So this isn't in a voluntary inclusionary housing area. So an R-6A would have a maximum building height of 70 feet, which can be increased to 75 feet with a qualifying ground floor. There is a base height of 60 feet here and an FAR of 3.
We can also look in the environmental review. There may have been an as-of-right no-action scenario that could have, like, there might even be a building massing, I'm not sure. We could take a look and see what's there.
So it would likely be a seven-story building rather than a nine-story building, roughly?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, in a similar vein, I guess I'm curious to know why this, why we aren't looking at an R-7A here rather than R-7D. It's just adjacent to an area that was rezoned for R-7A with voluntary inclusionary housing, you know. So maybe this is an illustration of the range of policies that we've tried to pursue for affordable housing over the last decade-plus. Has there been any uptake in voluntary inclusionary housing in this neighborhood or really anywhere? Isn't an R-7A a more appropriate density? We could map that with MIH here. And I'm also struck by the, some of the written testimony we've received so far. I expect we'll hear more at the hearing that the community immediately surrounding this site seems pretty well organized in opposition. But that point of view didn't carry with the community board. So I'm going to be listening at the hearing to understand that difference of opinion.
Thank you. Other questions?
Is this the first mandatory proposed project in this community board I can recall?
I am not sure, but I can get back to you on that.
And let me check again if others. Okay, it sounds like we are going to have an interesting public hearing on Wednesday.
Yes. All right, thanks, Amy. Moving on to the 11th item on our agenda. It's a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens Community District 1, and our presenter is Joy Chen.
Madam Chair, I'm recused from this matter.
That's right. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Joy Chen, and I will be presenting 30-02 Newtown Avenue rezoning this afternoon. Next slide. 30-02 Newtown Avenue is a private application submitted by Medrep Associates for a zoning map amendment from a C-44A district to a C-44D district located at 30-02 Newtown Avenue in Queens Community District 1. A zoning text amendment is also being proposed to Appendix F for mandatory affordable housing. The requested actions would facilitate a new mixed-use 11-story building containing 104 units, 8,400 square feet of ground-floor retail use, and a 99-seat black box theater for the Astoria Performing Arts Center, in addition to 30 attended parking spaces in the cellar. The proposed development would provide either 26 units of affordable housing under option 1 or 31 units under option 2. Next slide. This bird's-eye view of the local context shows the project site at 30-02 Newtown Avenue, situated within a medium-to-high-density mixed-use area in Astoria, one block away from the N and the W subway located at 31st Street and 30th Avenue. One block southeast of the project area is 30th Avenue, which is the well-established and popular commercial strip with many famous restaurants and then local supermarkets, banks, and other retail uses along both sides of 30th Avenue. The project site is also well-connected to major transit thoroughfares, including Astoria Boulevard, approximately one-third mile north of the site, connecting Astoria to the Grand Central Parkway. And you can also see in the foreground, the project site is a 10-to-15-minute walk from the East River waterfront as well. Next slide. The surrounding area map shows existing land uses and zoning. The project area 30-02 Newtown Avenue is co-terminous with the development site outlined in red. The proposed rezoning area is bounded by Newtown Avenue to the north, 31st Street to the east, 30th Street to the west, and 30th Avenue to the south. And you can see that the existing zoning here is a C-44A zoning district. The project area is irregularly shaped and has a total lot area of approximately 15,825 square feet. And the project area is currently improved with a two-story, 27,000-square-feet commercial building, Max Finkelstein Goodyear Tires, which is a wholesale tire distributor and car repair shop. The surrounding area, as you can see from the land use map, is very mixed with strong commercial corridors. There are also several large institutional uses, such as Mount Sinai Hospital of Queens, many doctors' offices, physical therapy offices, as well as two elementary schools and two high schools within a one-block radius, and a mix of multifamily residential uses and a mix of housing types. Next slide, please. The tax map shows the development site outlined in red and the proposed zoning district C-44D outlined in the dashlines. The development site has 76 feet of frontage along 30th Street and a combined frontage of 220 feet along Newtown Avenue, which is its longest side, and 61 feet of frontage along 31st Street, which is the street where the subway is. Two large existing curb cuts on Newtown Avenue and 30th Street provide vehicular access to the existing tire service shop. Block 595, as you can see here on the tax map, lots 19, 26, and 27 are owned by the applicant, and Lot 10 is owned by Verizon. Next slide. The next two slides show the photos of the existing context, and this is the 30th Street view, which is the backside of the development site. You can see on the right-hand side a mixed-use seven-story residential building with ground-floor retail at the corner of 30th Street and Newtown Avenue. And then also on the bottom, the view of the northwest side of 30th Street facing west from the development site. Next slide. These photos illustrate the existing tire shop along the Newtown Avenue and 31st Street corner, and this is the corner facing the subway, the elevated N and the W at 31st Street, as well as facing west from the development site at Newtown Avenue and 31st Street. Next slide. The project overview. The proposed development consists of an 11-story mixed-use building with approximately 104 dwelling units, ground-floor retail uses, and a 99-seat black box theater in the basement. MIH options 1 and 2 are proposed, and the development would provide 30 attended parking spaces in the cellar level, which would be accessed from a new 15-foot curb cut on 30th Street. The proposed development would have an FAR of 7.19 and rise to a total height of 145 feet. And the massing shows how the bulk of the building density will be highest at 11 stories facing 31st Street, where the elevated subway runs and Newtown Avenue, and then it steps down to six stories closer to the back end at 30th Street, where there's a more lower-density mixed-use residential context. Next slide. The site plan and the proposed new development shows retail use, community facility use, and residential uses. The building, as I just described, has a six-story portion on the back end at 30th Street and increases to 11 stories on the front end facing 31st Street and Newtown Avenue. Next slide. The ground floor of the proposed new development shows the layout of the mix of uses, which would include 8,400 square feet of retail space with entrances at both 31st Street and Newtown Avenue, a residential lobby at Newtown Avenue, and the theater lobby and ticketing office would have its entrance on 30th Street at the back. The cellar parking would also be accessed from the back of the development on 30th Street, and the parking would be approximately 8,800 square feet of cellar parking with 2,030 square feet of ground-floor community facility use with additional space for the 99-seat theater in the cellar. Next slide. This section illustrates the three different mixed uses in the proposed new development from the lowest cellar level, which has the parking and theater uses, including the accessory uses to the theater, to the ground-floor retail use and residential uses, would go from floors 2 to 11. The maximum building height is 145 feet, and it's built at 7.19 FAR. Next slide. The elevation from the Newtown Avenue frontage, which is the proposed development's longest side, shows the brick facade, and you can see how the proposed development steps up from six stories at 30th Street up to 11 stories at 31st Street. This is in keeping with the generally higher-density buildings concentrated closer to the subway at 31st Street. Next slide. This slide shows the proposed zoning map change from the existing C-44A zoning district to a C-44D zoning district. As quick background, the project area was originally zoned R-6 at the time of the adoption of the zoning resolution in 1961. And in 2010, it was rezoned to C-44A as part of the Astoria rezoning. At that time, the project area was rezoned due to its location along a wide street, as well as its close proximity to public transit. Next slide. This map illustrates the related action of a zoning text amendment to Appendix F, the creation of a mandatory affordable housing area, Area 9. They are proposing 26 units under option 1 or 31 units under option 2. Next slide. In summary, according to the applicant, the proposed C-44D zoning district is located in an area that is well-served by public transportation and well-equipped to handle the proposed increase in density here at 30-02 Newtown Avenue. The proposed development would be consistent with the bulk of the six-to-10-story commercial mixed-use buildings, both to the north and south, and is adjacent to 31st Street and Newtown Avenue, both wide streets. The proposed increase in residential density would be consistent with land use trends in this area of Astoria, and would also help facilitate the construction of a higher number of permanently affordable units under mandatory inclusionary housing, option 1 or option 2, and also be accompanied by the development of a community theater space that would bring new arts and cultural programming to existing and future residents here. The proposed ground-floor retail uses would activate the streetscape along this stretch of Newtown Avenue, match the strong commercial context, and improve the pedestrian experience. Next slide. And finally, this is a rendering provided by the applicant of the proposed new development at 30-02 Newtown Avenue. And this is the corner of, this view is from the corner of 31st Street and Newtown Avenue. This concludes my presentation, and I'll gladly answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Joy. Commissioner Lewis.
Thanks for the presentation. So just two questions. One is, what is the AMI level in the community board?
The AMI here is for a family of three in this part of Newtown Avenue, 96,500. And under option 1 or 60% AMI, it would be 57,900 for a family of three. And under option 2 or 80% AMI, it would be 77,200.
That's locally, like, that's immediately. And how about in the larger community board?
I have to find out what that is for the larger community board, but for this section of Newtown Avenue, it's 96,500 for families of three.
That's pretty high, right, immediately? And am I recalling that there was another project in Astoria that had a black box theater in it? Or is it, I'm recalling, another arts use perhaps for that other Astoria project that was in the last?
You are remembering. There was a theater, which I believe was the, it was a Cypriot Greek organization that had a theater. We can look that up and sort of get that here. Seems to be a popular use in everywhere.
Well, no, I guess that's my point. I'm just, I'm assuming that the applicant is working closely with the future user of the black box theater that wouldn't have been included in the proposal. So it'd just be helpful to kind of get more background about, you know, what they're, how they're currently, what their theater, local theater resources are now and how this changes things for the future.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, no, on that point, I simply wanted to salute the proposed use of a, of space for a performing arts, a local performing arts group. This group of users is always in a quest to find space citywide. So I just think it heartening that they have been able to collaborate, hopefully successfully. So I just think it heartening that they have been able to collaborate, hopefully successfully, with this Astoria Performing Arts Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I certainly agree with Commissioner Knuckles about the desirability of including art space. They are always being looked for, but I went and looked at the Astoria Performing Arts Center website, and just last, what, in the middle of, late October, they issued a press release announcing that they found a new home someplace else in Long Island City and announcing a fundraising campaign. So I'm particularly interested in following up on the question that Commissioner Deloos asked about how they, if they're still related to this project, and what's up with the other space that they've just celebrated. And then I have a zoning question, which won't surprise you, because I think it's kind of the same question that I had on Cortellou. You know, we rezoned this area for C four four A just ten years ago, which in planning terms is like last week. And we, as you correctly recited, Joy, we used exactly the same rationale then as is used now for a further bump up in floor area. So why were we just wrong or short sighted in two thousand and ten? Has the world changed that much? Has there been any uptake in the voluntary inclusionary housing program, which is what we mapped in two thousand and ten? You know, is the quest for affordable housing inevitably going to drive us toward more and more density to try and make something work? Because that's what we thought we were doing in two thousand and ten.
Right. That's a very good question. In two thousand and ten, you know, there was the voluntary inclusionary zoning that was mapped here in the C four four A district, which would allow a bump up to four point six F A R for residential use. And with the voluntary inclusionary housing, the maximum residential floor area here would be under that existing C four four A, seventy four thousand seven hundred and ninety five square feet. However, under the existing voluntary inclusionary housing program, only twenty percent of residential floor area is required to be permanently affordable. So there's a lot more that can be developed under this, the C four four D, which is just a slight bump up rather than our seven A equivalent. It's now an R eight A, but the developers think that that would help the higher density make this project more viable and also have more inclusionary housing.
Okay. Look forward to continuing the conversation when we get to the hearing.
But when this comes back, we can look in the area to see what uptake there has been. We know that we've seen on, along a number of corridors in Queens where there was a rezoning with the I H hasn't produced anything. So it felt good to rezone, but it didn't yield the result of more construction. But we'll look in this particular area when it comes back for our pre-hearing review session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, was that my cue?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm just a bit confused by the sort of architectural expression of this building. It seems really torn between vertical and horizontal expression, between balconies and no balconies, between materials of one kind, materials of another. So the whole thing is sort of very disjointed. So I would encourage the architects to take a fresh look at perhaps blending and simplifying the expression.
Thank you. We'll pass that along. Other questions? Okay, then this application is certified.
Thank you, Joy. So moving on to our pre-hearing items in Queens, the twelfth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Queens Community District Seven, and our presenter is Haikang Yang.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you. The D S N Y Q seven parking lot annex application is returning as a pre-hearing item. Next slide, please. The Department of Sanitation, in conjunction with D C A S, seeks a site selection and acquisition of this thirty eight thousand square foot parking lot at one twenty two dash ten thirty first avenue to continue to support Department of Sanitation's operations for Q seven, Q seven A, eleven A garages, and to continue operations without trucks parking on neighborhood streets. Department of Sanitation has no plans for any future construction on the project site. The parking lot has been occupied by the Department of Sanitation since October first, two thousand and fifteen, and has been used for the agency's overflow vehicle storage and equipment, as well as other sister agencies' vehicles waiting repair pursuant to the Merrill Directive for fleet consolidation. The parking lot addresses the Mayor's Executive Order one sixty one, requiring consolidation of municipal fleet operations and centralization of repair and maintenance functions to reduce fleet costs and improve service. Next slide, please. The project site is located within M two dash one district within the College Point Special District. The M two district allows a parking lot use. Next slide, please. Land uses within the M two district area consist primarily of parking facilities, industrial, manufacturing, transportation, and utility uses. The project site in the hash red is adjacent to such uses, including storage yards, parking lots, a self-storage facility, utilities yard, and showroom for wholesale construction materials. Next slide. The project site's proposed parking lot annex supports the Q seven garage and Q seven A, Q eleven A mechanical broom annex, both located one block north of the project site. Next slide, please. There are several city facilities located closely to the project site. The Q seven garage is located to the northwest, and Q seven A, Q eleven A mechanical broom annex, as well as the lot cleaning unit, are all located in the same building at thirty dash nineteen one twenty second street to the northeast of the project site. The Department of Sanitation's North Shore Marine Transfer Station and Household Special Waste Drop Off are located to the west. Other state and city agencies also operate facilities near the project site, including N Y P D's Tow Pound and Police Academy and the State's D M B. Next slide. Photos, photo one shows the fenced and paved proposed parking lot annex from thirty first avenue, and photo two shows the typical overflow vehicles that are located within the parking lot annex. Operationally, the lot stores a combination of sixteen to twenty four vehicles and five to ten condemned trucks, as well as short term parking of ten to fifteen empty roll on and roll off containers, and typically three to four vehicles from other agencies awaiting repair. The lot will operate five days a week, Monday through Friday, from six A M to two P M. No personnel are stationed on the site. Next slide, please. The C P C certified the project on September fourteenth and was referred out to the community board and borough president. On November ninth, community board seven voted to approve the application with conditions. The five conditions include that the area be utilized primarily for C B seven trucks and equipments for going emergency conditions. Ensure that trucks and equipment do not remain in the lot more than eight weeks, with particular attention to equipment being taken out of service or, and going to auction or final disposition. Once construction is completed on the floor slab at the Q seven garage building, D S N Y endeavors to keep as much equipment off the local streets as possible. Ingress and egress to the facility should take place on thirty first avenue, and trucks and equipment should always utilize truck routes or commercial routes when traveling to and from the site. If friendly recommendation was made, that additional street cleaning be performed on College Point Boulevard from Lax Avenue to the Van Wick at least twice a week. There, we, the B P held a hearing on this item on December third, and with the speed of technology, we just received it at two forty eight. During the, during the hearing, Borough President Richards asked the same questions as Commissioner Knuckles did when it was certified, which was why the five years lease was so short. And the D S N Y noted that on October two thousand and fifteen, they entered into a lease agreement with the private ownership of the parking lot, and the license was negotiated with an option to lease with like terms with an expiration date of October two thousand and twenty five upon U L A approval. And I'm gonna just read you the Borough President's recommendation, if that's okay. The recommendation is, based on the above consideration, I hereby approve, recommend approval of this application with the following conditions. College Point Boulevard experienced significant development in the last two decades, which has significantly increased foot and vehicular traffic on the once utilized streets, underutilized streets. There have also been extensive reorganization of the downtown Flushing Street Network that has been, that has redirected traffic from Main Street onto nearby streets, including College Point Boulevard. D S N Y should increase street cleaning on College Point Boulevard, and particularly the busiest portion of the heavily utilized thoroughfare north through to the College Point Commercial Quarter and south at Roosevelt Avenue. The proposed parking lot on thirty first avenue and the nearby D S N Y C D seven garage are located in close proximity to the College Point Corporate Park. D S N Y must make all efforts to maintain and keep streets around these facilities free and clear of vehicles or equipments. Thank you.
Thank you for that late breaking news.
Two forty eight.
Questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will see this item at a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the thirteenth item on the agenda, which is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District eleven, and our presenter is Hala Salai. I believe that Commissioner Rob Shad, you were accused on this item as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide. This is a private application in the Astoria neighborhood in Queens Community District one. The application is for a zoning map amendment from an R five and an R five C one two to an R six A and R six A C one dash two, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a new eight story mixed use residential and commercial building that was presented to the commission on August seventeenth and certified on September fourteenth. Next slide. The project site is located along twenty eighth Avenue between forty first street and forty third street in Astoria, Queens. The area is well serviced by mass transit, including the N and W trains, as well as bus service along twenty eighth Avenue provided by the Q eighteen and along Steinway Street from the Q one oh one. Next slide. The site comprises of all or portions of twelve lots and is located on the north side of twenty eighth Avenue with a depth of a hundred feet, except from the center line of forty second street to the mid block, which has a depth of a hundred and twenty five feet. The development site shown in red is improved with a two story mixed use building with a ground floor restaurant, and the remaining lots within the rezoning boundary consist of overbuilt multifamily residential buildings. Next slide. The project area was originally zoned R five in nineteen sixty one and was mapped with a C one two commercial overlay district with a depth of a hundred and fifty feet in two thousand and thirteen. This was to legalize the existing restaurant and parking lot. The area to the west of the project area was rezoned in two thousand and ten from the Astoria rezoning, resulting in a C four two A district, which is an R six A equivalent along Steinway Street and an R six A along twenty eighth Avenue, a wide street. Next slide. The photo on the left shows the development site with the existing ground floor restaurant known as Piccolo Venezia, and the image on the right is a series of four story multifamily buildings west of the development site with F A Rs ranging from three point oh seven to three point four nine. Next slide. Here are some additional photos showcasing the multifamily building to the east of the development site. Next slide. The proposed development would provide an eight story mixed use building with fifty four dwelling units and six thousand nine hundred and twenty six square feet of ground floor commercial space. Sixty six parking lots would be provided, of which fifty six would be attended parking in the cellar, and the remaining ten would be provided in the surface parking lot. The existing restaurant would temporarily relocate elsewhere in the neighborhood during construction. Additionally, the development would consist of a eighteen hundred square foot green roof with open recreation space and an herb garden for the ground floor restaurant. Next slide. The ground floor would comprise of the restaurant and would be accessed from twenty eighth Avenue, forty second street, and through a pathway behind the structure adjacent to the surface parking lot. The residential and parking entrance would be along forty second street. Next slide. This is a rendering of the proposal showing the building in its existing context on twenty eighth Avenue. Next slide. The proposed zoning map amendment would establish an R six A zoning district in the rezoning area and would bring existing overbuilt buildings into conformance. Next slide. The applicant would be mapping M I H options one and two with the preference for M I H option two, which would provide sixteen affordable units. Next slide. Queens Community District one held a public hearing on October twentieth and recommended approval with the conditions that the maximum building height shouldn't exceed six stories and must comply with M I H option one. Next slide. The Queens Borough President held a public hearing and recommended approval based on the applicant's revisions as suggested by community board one. Next slide. The applicant team has agreed to the conditions placed on the project from the community board and borough president and have revised their illustrative plans to provide a six story building with fifty one units, of which thirteen would be M I H units under option one. I cannot take any questions.
Thank you, Hala. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. I did not see the, a letter from the community board or the borough president in our packages. Did, did the community board say anything more than simply, was there any analysis that supported the recommendation that you have on that slide?
Sure. There should have been a letter from the community board, and we can make sure to send it over.
I didn't see it in my package, but.
Sure. Well, we'll send it over. But they, they, the main questions that they brought up were around the AMI and affordability. They were really concerned too that there were too many studio apartments in the development. So the applicant team did revise the building plan, but changed some of that unit distribution. And then there was a lot of talk around the building height themselves and it being in context with the surrounding buildings, which are around five stories. So that's why they chose the six story mark.
Okay. Yeah, it's great. It's great that the applicant is being responsive to the community board and the borough president, if that's the case. But, you know, we're just faced with a mapping action and really can't do anything beyond the mapping. I mean, we can't memorialize there, you know, require the changes that have been negotiated.
Correct.
Other comments? Okay, this will be the third public hearing item on our agenda on Wednesday.
Hey, moving on to item fourteen. It is a non-euler post referral of a minor modification to a previously approved special permit in Queens Community District two, and our presenter is Alexis Wheeler.
I actually, for the third time today, would like to make some comments before Alexis makes the presentation. This project, which is nearing the completion of its construction in Long Island City, has taken a very long time to materialize. It's evolved over the past twenty plus years from its original concept as a one million square foot office building to its current two towered residential apartment building form. And actually, this form itself dates And actually, this form itself dates back to the early part of the last decade. As such, this project epitomizes the influences that time, markets, planning, and zoning can have on major development proposals. Also, this project clearly demonstrates the determination and persistence required of project sponsors to meet and overcome the challenges posed by these dynamics. And in true New York City fashion, both the project and its late developer Jerry Walkoff generated controversy over the years. I want to express condolences to the Walkoffs family on Jerry's passing on July 17th and acknowledge that this project will be a bittersweet legacy for the Walkoff family, especially his son David, who is working now to complete the project. And with that, I turn it over to Alexis.
Thank you for those thoughtful words, Cher Lago, and good afternoon, Commissioners. I will begin once the presentation is loaded. Thank you. So this is a private application to approve the modified development of a new residential and commercial building in Long Island City, Community District 2, Queens. Next slide, please. The owner of the development site at 2244 Jackson Avenue is GNM Realty. They are applying to modify a previously approved special permit pursuant to 11756, and that is to legalize what is a soon-to-be-completed building that is composed of two towers at 48 and 42 stories. It's actually been well over a year since this project was referred by the Commission, and so this post-referral presentation will also serve to refresh everyone's memories with the project details. Next slide, please. The project site, shown here in red, is located in the Long Island City neighborhood within Community District 2 in Western Queens. The site is part of the Queens Plaza Subdistrict in the special Long Island City Mixed-Use District. The development site is in the Court Square neighborhood situated northwest of Sunnyside Yard and is one to two blocks from the Court Square's EM7NG subway station. Next slide, please. Here again, the project site is shown in red, and it includes the entirety of Block 86. The site is bounded by Jackson Avenue, Davis Street, Crane Street, and Sunnyside Yard. The surrounding area is highly mixed use with all sorts of buildings, including residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses. Next slide, please. Construction for the new two-tower building is nearing completion on the project site. The north tower is, it fronts directly on Jackson Avenue, and the south tower is fronting on the Sunnyside Yard portion of the site. The seven train wraps around the site with elevated tracks along the southern and eastern portions of the site running along Davis Street, and MoMA PS1 is one block southwest of the site on Jackson Avenue. Next slide, please. The special Long Island City Mixed-Use District includes a unique special permit, so 11756, that is applicable to two specific blocks in the Queens Plaza Subdistrict, one of those being Block 86. The special permit allowed for the increase of a maximum FAR from 5 to 8, and the conditions of that were the provision of at least 20,000 square feet of public open space and a 250-space public parking garage. To meet the requirements, the special permit also allows for adjustments to underlying street wall and base height regulations. The city issued the special permit for this site in 2013 to facilitate the development of this overall building composed of two towers, which at that time were 47 and 41 stories, approximately 1,000 units, and that was at a little over 1 million square feet of residential and commercial floor area, 50,000 square feet of retail space, dedicated space for artist studios, a 250-space public parking garage, and over 32,000 square feet of public open space. Next slide, please. And here in purple, you will see the approved open spaces that were approved as part of that special permit. The public open space along Davis and wrapping around the building to about the Sunnyside Yard is the largest component, but there is also a smaller corner space at the corner of Crane Street and Jackson Avenue on the lower left. Next slide, please. So construction for this project is largely complete, and both towers have topped out. So just to show you in these two images what we are talking about right now, you can see the two overall towers on the left, and then on the right side, you'll see how it actually fronts on Jackson Avenue. Next slide, please. So during the process of construction, the applicant made four sets of adjustments to their site plan to accommodate previously unknown site conditions and structural requirements, and they have applied for the required CPSE approval of these modifications to proceed with securing their certificate of occupancy. And so they are called out on the right here, but I will, in the subsequent slides, be briefly explaining each of these modifications. And first with the Davis Street street wall relocation. Next slide, please. So first, the applicant had moved a portion of the Davis Street street wall back two feet from Davis Street. The special district normally, in an as-of-right situation, would require 100% street wall location, so it would be built to the corner. The 2013 special permit had allowed for a setback of 15 feet to facilitate the required public open space. And then during the process of discovering subsurface conditions that would prohibit the the construction of some of the foundational elements below grade, they wound up setting the building back two additional feet, so it is a total setback of 17 feet now. Next slide, please. So second, the applicant seeks to revise the street wall setback waivers for the south tower lobby, and the approved setback waiver is currently shown to be set back in what is blue. And then, if you could just advance the graphic, please. And now in the red, you're seeing what the new configuration is, and that is largely a result of changes that had to be made to the structure of the elevator bank that required a change in the facade location to permit required circulation. So if you could go to the next slide, please. And here you'll see how the thickness of the sheer wall around the elevator lobby bank was increased from what was initially thought during the special permit drawings to the left to what the structure actually required on the right. And so you'll see to facilitate the safe circulation around these elements, that's where they had to modify the location of the lobby wall. Next slide, please. So there are also some modifications made to the roofs of both towers, and that includes kind of these upper base heights that are labeled in both purple and yellow, and then some of the higher tower tops that are labeled in green and red and orange. And so if we could go to the next slide, please. And so the, the lower base height that was increased was increased by 1.01 feet, and that was to be facilitating a larger depth of structure for the exterior of the building. And then the green label is what is the very tower top portion that had to increase its height by 6.39 feet, and that is part of the elevator overrun portion of the building. Next slide, please. And now here, we're looking at the southern portion of the building where the increase in the overall heights were modified. And so the yellow is showing one of the lower portions of the building where, because of the same unanticipated structural increases, 1.43 feet were increased, and then higher up on the building, 4.51 feet, and finally, an increase of 3.45 feet. And that, the red, the 3.45, is again part of the elevator overrun component. Next slide, please. And so this is just showing the differences between where this project was in 2013 at the time of the special permit being approved and where the proposal overall is now. Back in 2013, the two tower heights were at 47 and 41 stories respectively, and now they have been modified to 48 and 42. There is no change in the overall floor area of this project. This is merely modifications that they wound up making, both in changing the overall floor floor heights, but also in the process of changing the floor locations and some of the overall building design. The retail space is very similar. It was proposed at 50,000, and now it's just shy of that number at 49,232 square feet. The artist space has increased from the initial 12,000 that was proposed to 15,230. The required parking spaces are the same, and the public open space is largely the same and has, in fact, increased by approximately 150 square feet. Next slide, please. This was referred to Community Board 2. And on October 3rd, 2019, they held a public hearing to discuss the minor modifications, and the vote was 24 in favor, five opposed, and one abstention. The recommendation that they shared included the following conditions, and I do just want to caveat that these conditions were largely looking at a community benefits agreement that they had established back in 2013 when this was approved. And so they largely don't pertain to the overall land use decisions that were made on this project, but rather what they were sort of looking for in the final delivery of the project in their community. And so they were targeting a residential unit mix of 595 one-bedroom units, 261 two-bedroom units, and 12 three-bedroom units. This does align with their final proposal for the project. And then 220 units they wanted to see made affordable through the 421A tax abatement. And in fact, we are looking at 30% of the units being made affordable, and so that's 337 units of their final development. An increase to the gross area for the artist studios, and so that aligns with what their, what their final proposal is at over 15,000 square feet. Prevailing wage jobs to be provided for building service workers. And finally, the provision of 5,000 square feet of usable space for the Queens Public Library at $1 per year in perpetuity. The Queens Public Library request was something that had come up during the course of the public hearing, and so that's actually the big driver between, or behind, why we haven't seen this project in so long was the negotiations that the developer had undertaken with Queens Public Library. But you have seen in your briefing packages that they did wind up coming up to an agreement, and that is that they, they have agreed to provide approximately 5,000 square feet of space on site. At this time, because of our economic crisis, the Queens Public Library is not able to execute on this lease deal at this time. And so the developer has provided the ability for the execution of that lease to take place through the January of 2025. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for presenting a lot of information in super clear, Alexis. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you, Alexis. Could you just go back to the overall site plan, the first site plan that you had? I think that's the one.
Yes, so Jeff, I think that would be slide seven.
It's that one. It's almost like the builder's pavement plan. Yes, that's the one. So what I'm trying to understand, so now we've got this so-called public open area along Davis. It's basically just a wider sidewalk, right? So there's no fence or anything. You go from the curb to the building, and you get, what, you get a 17-foot sidewalk instead of a 15-foot sidewalk? Is that how it works?
It's, it's actually the sidewalk that's already there plus 17 feet.
Plus 17 feet. So it's like a super wide sidewalk, really?
Yes, yes.
And I'm assuming that the sidewalk treatment is the same, and the maintenance of the sidewalk is the same. There's no, it's basically just a public sidewalk, really?
Yes, I, I'm afraid I don't have a plan here showing the amenities.
Oh, there are amenities?
I, I actually don't, I don't know offhand. Apologies, but I do assume that is similar to an extended sidewalk plaza that would allow for some of the uses that are along that ground floor to spill out and to provide a little bit more buffer between the elevated tracks and the building face. But it's largely to also facilitate easy movement to access the more substantial open space that's on the southern portion of the site.
Uh huh, okay. I mean, my question really has to do with, you know, I mean, on a normal sidewalk, you know, DOT would come out and put out benches and bike racks and that kind of street furniture and wayfinding. But that's not the case here because it's private, public, it's privately owned public space, right?
That's correct.
So I'm just wondering how it's going to be treated. I see there are tree pits. I'm assuming that the applicant is maintaining the trees, but what about other forms of street furniture and so on?
I don't have that information here, but that is a follow-up with you.
It's just a kind of a weird skinny strip of land for pops. You know, you would normally expect something like what you have at the end of the site where there's a, you know, more generous depth and room to actually landscape it and put some seating. So I just wonder how they're going to treat that particular section. Maybe that'll come up when, when they present, if they will present.
There, there will not be a presentation for this project because they, this is, this is post-referral. And so just subject to a voice vote from the Commission now.
I see. Okay, okay.
I can note, Commissioner, is that this was approved a number of years ago, and what is before us now are sort of the incredibly surgical changes to what was approved that came about because of the site conditions. And it is not the Commission's, the Commission previously approved this, and so the focus here are on those extremely minor changes that elected through.
Oh, so that train already left the station, right? So that's my, my bad for not being here at the time. Okay, all right, no worries.
Which is why we are so glad you're here now.
Absolutely.
So much unique perspectives, overlapping perspectives. Let me check to see if there are others. Commissioner Levin, had you wanted to speak?
Well, yes, I had one thing to say about the library, but David, I can assure you, it seemed weird then too. And in truth, I think, as I'm recalling it, I've got colleagues around who were, who predate me in this, but, and probably have better memories. It really was, as Alexis mentioned, it's the way to get to the main action of the open space down the back. And I thought, I think there is some landscaping that was required, but it was, it was not optimal then, but it's what we got. On the Queens Library, I see the letter in the package. First off, it's great that they worked something out. I've been curious why this one has been hung up for a year and a half. And it's also great that there's some flexibility in there to allow the library to get through the current challenging times. Is the idea that, and there's nothing in the letter that addresses this, maybe no one knows, whether there will be any interim temporary use in that space before the library is ready to take it or not. Will it sit as vacant space?
That we, we don't know at this time.
Okay.
We do know that it won't be encumbered long-term during this period because it has to be available to the library when they are able to. And I, I thank the Commissioners for the patience in waiting to have this come back. It, sometimes it's worth waiting to have a felicitous result. Um, let's see, other, not seeing other hands. What I will now ask is for a voice vote to send a letter to the Department of Buildings, letting them know that this is a minor modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, we'll send out the letter and thank you.
Thank you.
Now, now I'm stretched. The, the fourteenth or fifteenth item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification for three-twelve Coney Island Avenue, which is a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Seven. And Amy Jin is here to present.
Great, okay, thank you. So hi again, commissioners. You may remember this project, but just as a reminder, this is a thirteen-story mixed-use faith-based development containing residential, community facility and ground-floor commercial uses. City Council recently voted to approve a number of modifications to the requested actions. So I'll start with the easy ones. So for the parking special permit, the applicant previously included a waiver for all residential accessory parking and had proposed to include eighty permitted parking spaces in the cellar. The city council modified the special permit so that those eighty spaces are now required. It doesn't really make like a, a quantifiable change to the proposed project. So then moving on to the first of the two text amendment modifications, City Council is removing M I H option two. And then lastly, can we go to the next slide, please? So the City Council is modifying the proposed text amendment to the Special Ocean Parkway District. Previously, you'll remember that the applicant proposed to modify the bulk requirements of the Special Ocean Parkway District, allowing for the street wall along the circle to rise sheer to the maximum building height of a hundred and forty-five feet along the five hundred-foot-wide circle. This was done so that the bulk could be shifted away from the western portion of the site and move towards the circle, giving the building an appropriate transition along Kaden Place, which you can see on the image to the left here. Next slide, please. So the City Council modification changes the various heights and setbacks. These changes result in an envelope that you can see here in front of you. I'm happy to take any questions, but those are all the modifications.
We note as a department that this, these changes are clearly within scope, but we also note our disappointment at having the height and the bulk shifted onto a narrow street rather than along the circle where we were pleased that the applicant had worked with the department to create a signature building that amplified the circle. And I'll toss it open if commissioners have any questions or comments.
Unfortunate.
Agreed. Commissioner Bernie?
Is there nothing to be done about that? That's just the way it is, hey?
The determination is always whether it is within the scope of the original application and the council was within its rights to be able to do it, even as I think many of us think that from a planning and design point of view, the applicant's design that had been worked through with the department was preferable. But there's no doubt that it is within scope.
Well, are you sure there's no doubt? Looks pretty out of scope to me.
There's the lay sense, the architecturally refined design sense, and there is the legal sense, which. So with that, I will ask for an assent to send a letter to the Buildings Department. Oh, I'm sorry, back to the council to let them know that this is within scope. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Marine?
Opposed. I, I, I happen to think the design that was presented prior was superior and it actually led light into the, into the back of the smaller portfolio of buildings in the back. And I think we should point that out to the, to the, to the council. Now, it shouldn't just be the council changes something and we can't make comment to it. I think that the previous design was superior and I want that to go on record.
I, I, I concur. I would like to also go on record exactly the same way.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I think the full commission would.
Me too.
Yes.
I cannot.
Aye.
Mission note that we have already let the council know our views on this.
Okay, but we can join.
Right, we can, we can remind them again.
Thank you, will do.
Moving on to future votes. On December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, decisions have been scheduled for three-thirty Giffords Lane and sixty-two Seacrest Avenue. Both are Staten Island, South Richmond actions. And then for January sixth, twenty twenty-one, a report is being prepared for the Angel Guardian Home land bar designation. There was a briefing package in your package on Friday for this, this item. Are there any questions about the above?
If commissioners haven't already read through it, it is a very good feel-good holiday season story behind the Angel Guardian Home.
Yes, and then for post-hearing follow-up, if we, we have the Schubert Court Theater rehab. If there are any further questions on that, we can take them and get back to you. All right. The Sixteenth Avenue rezoning, again, and the forty-two eleven Ninth Street I B I A special permit and text amendment. Any further questions on that?
Well, then I will want to thank the commissioners for a relatively long meeting, but also to thank the presenters and landlords review staff who moved us through a jam-packed agenda with remarkable efficiency. Thank you.
So this concludes the review session for Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. The time is three fifty-eight, so just under three hours.
See you on Wednesday.
Take care.
And then thank you.
Thank you.